To the school committee meeting, we have a lengthy agenda today.
Recording in progress.
We might as well jump right in. First up, we have administrative business, the consent agenda. Past record, May 26, school committee meeting. A possible vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with Afsmi and a possible vote to authorize the deputy superintendent of administration and finance or designate me to adjust the facilities assessment to base program. We'll take these as individual votes. So first on the consent agenda, would someone like to move it? Thank you, Steven. Sir, a second. Thank you, Nancy. Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne? Your vote, consent agenda? All right, Suzanne, your vote?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Next up, we have possible votes to approve the memorandum of agreement with Afsmi School Building Service employees. Sam, do you want to talk about that a little bit first? All right, don't see Sam with us quite yet. Would someone like to move the memorandum of agreement with Afsmi? Thank you, Suzanne. Sir, a second. Thank you, Steven. Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And finally, possible vote to authorize the deputy superintendent of administration and finance or designate me to adjust the facilities assessment to the Brooklyn Adult and Community Education Program to the lesser of $42,542.40 or what would allow Base to finish in a break even position for FY 2022, allowing for its revolving fund balance to have a sufficient balance for prepaid tuitions for FY 23 to be covered. Would someone like to move that vote? Thank you, Jennifer. Sir, a second. Thank you, Andy. Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That brings us to the student report. Your very first one, Laura, welcome. Go right ahead.
Hey, everyone. Okay, yeah, okay. Hello, everyone. I hope you've all had a terrific Thursday. It's your school committee student rep, Laura Close, and I'm here to catch you up all on speed on all the latest VHS happening, so let's get into it. Before I get into what will be the bulk of my presentation, I have a few quick updates about what's going on at VHS. Firstly, the Brooklyn Juneteenth Committee is sponsoring an essay contest about the National Holiday Juneteenth, also known as Black Independence Day. Secondly, the Spring Musical Theater Cabaret is taking place tonight, 7:30, at the VHS Black Box or Room 324, for those of you who aren't familiar with the high school. Admission is free, snacks are not, and proceeds go to every town for gun safety. Finally, the Latinx Club is holding the Latinx party on June 17 at 6:30, and proceeds go towards bankroll books for immigrant parents in some of those schools. The event will be held at VHS in the quad or in the atrium if it rains. Now, on to the main event. One of the things that really inspired me to run for school committee student rep was the potential this position had to amplify and represent other voices. Now, I need to give credit where credit is due. Claire Galyon, our former and dearly beloved rep, has been instrumental in giving others the ability to speak their mind and vocalize their needs. So in the vein of doing what must be done to uphold democracy, we'll be doing the same thing tonight. Tonight, I would like to spotlight the work of the Sharp Coalition and share what leader Sasha Culvert wishes to communicate to this body. Sharp stands for the Sexual Harassment/Assault Response and Prevention Coalition, and they are dedicated to dismantling rape culture at Brooklyn High School in order to provide a safe and supportive community for survivors of sexual assault and harassment. The Sharp Coalition is a student and faculty run group founded by former seniors Nick Hitchcock-Smith and Alex Noble in 2020. Currently, Sharp is led by Sasha Culvert, SWS English teacher Kira Flynn-Carson, and social worker Abby Dean. The Coalition meets every other week to work on projects dedicated to creating an educated, resourceful, and supportive community at Brooklyn High School. This group has been doing incredible work throughout the past two years. Their club meetings regularly draw 30 or more students, making them one of the most active and popular activist groups on VHS campus. This group has been doing incredible work throughout the past two years. Their club meetings regularly draw, oh, excuse me. One of their most impressive accomplishments was creating and delivering a day of change to VHS students over the past two years. With support from VHS educators and through the tireless work of students, this year's Day of Change was extremely successful. They also hosted an educational night for parents and guardians and conducted internal educational campaigns in specific classes. Next year, they hope to create captain councils that would meet once a month so that captains of sports teams can support each other in upholding a code of conduct that will help curb unwanted behaviors on sports teams. One of Sharp's goals is to bridge the gap between adults who implement policies that are meant to help students with issues of sexual assault and harassment and the student who are experiencing these issues. To that end, one of the major accomplishments of the group this year was the passage of a supportive measures bill that would be added to the VHS handbook to complement the district and state policies that already exist to help students. This bill attempts to shed light on all the supportive measures that a student can access at a time when they need it most. This bill was vetoed by Mr. Meyer. However, the legislature overrode this veto this past Tuesday. This means that the bill stands until it brings the matter to school committee. The legislature and Sharp Coalition hope to bring their bill to your attention and work with district leaders to offer the most comprehensive, supportive measures that our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. Steven, go ahead.
Sorry, just, hi, Laura. That was, thanks for that. I missed what the bill was. The very last thing you said, would you mind repeating what the proposed bill that was vetoed and then overridden was?
The supportive measures bill is a bill that will essentially provide, in the title, supportive measures to survivors of sexual violence at the high school. Things like extensions to homework and editing transcripts so that they actually reflect, you know, the work that the student was actually able to accomplish within the time that they were, you know, going through what they were going through. So things like that that would really empower students to take ownership of their education and their learning environment after incidents of sexual harassment or sexual violence.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Could you, do you mind saying again what the next steps are now that, now that Mr. Meyer's veto was overridden?
Well, after that, according to the VHS handbook, this bill, the vote that we just had, it either stands until or unless Mr. Meyer presents the bill to school committee. So right now, yeah, right now, we're waiting.
Default is that it's, it's in effect?
Um, well, yes, unless and until Mr. Meyer brings it to school committee. He and Dr. Letal has had time to respond.
Anyone else? Nancy? Nancy, are you on mute?
Did he give you an indication as to why he vetoed it?
Um, Mr. Meyer cited things that Dr. Maria Letal, who is the Title IX Coordinator in the town of Brooklyn, saying that some of the language in our bill and some of the policies that were in the bill are actually policies that, according to Dr. Letal, are going to be in effect or are pre-existing in original policy. It wasn't very clear, at least to the legislature, why Dr. Mr. Meyer Letal, excuse me, Mr. Meyer vetoed it. But again, we are waiting for Dr. Letal's and for Mr. Meyer to respond.
Mariah?
Laura, I just wanted to say that this was a great first presentation. And I really appreciated you providing this lens of visibility, not only into this hot button issue, but also into the life of the school and some of the upcoming activities. So I just wanted to say thank you, really informative and really helpful.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much, Laura. Welcome again, and we look forward to your reports moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we are going to discuss the 2022 superintendent evaluation process. This is more an opportunity for school committee members to ask any questions they might have as we work on this evaluation. I will say that ultimately, I'm going to have to read over all of them first and combine them into one single one, which we will then hopefully vote on on the 16th. We will be doctored to do that on the 16th. So I would appreciate if you could turn them in by Monday, the 13th, preferably earlier in the day, so I could have the evenings of the 13th and 14th to work on it. Mariah, do you have a question?
Sorry, that was an old hand.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions? Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, David. I just, Dr. Gillery, I've been looking at this, and under the standard one instructional leadership, one of your focus indicators was evaluations. And I just wondered, I don't really have much on that evidence or artifacts. I just wonder if you'd like to say a few words about how that has been, so kind of help me my judgment about that.
Yeah, so all of, I have the 10 building leaders as well as the senior team members that I'm focused on, and so when I wrote that indicator, that's, that's the group that I'm zeroing in on. And so all of those, that entire group is on target to have their evaluations in the system on or before June 30th, before then, because they'll be leaving sooner. Some will leave sooner than that. So we're on track with that, and we've been progressing along as well as building leaders also ensuring that evaluations are happening across their buildings.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Steven?
Um, David, could you go a bit more thoroughly through the process going forward on the superintendent evaluation? I'm not sure I understand. So, so Dr. Gillery submitted to us snippets of what he thought should be included in the superintendent's evaluation. It's now on us to respond to that to you with our suggestions on what should or should not be included based on his document. Is that right?
Essentially, so you should have received the standard form response for the evaluation for individual members. And then you look at Dr. Gillery's, what he had sent out as evidence, and you make an evaluation primarily based off of that information, and that's into your individual evaluation. Then when you complete your individual evaluation of Dr. Gillery in each of the categories that were described at the previous meeting, then I collect them all and I average the ratings together.
I'm sorry, but before we even get to the actual evaluations, the evaluation categories, what is the process for determining those categories?
It's a standard form that should have been.
My understanding from last year's workshop was that there's just a great number of potential indicators that we could use, and it's on us to pick and choose which indicators. Forgive me, this is my first time getting to do this. I just want to make sure I understand.
Suzanne, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks, yeah. So because this is his first year and he, we allowed Dr. Gillery to pick his own indicators. So he has done that, if you look at what he has sent us. And so if you look at the indicators, there's a page, I don't know, I have it right here somewhere. On page, it's page four of seven of the evaluation form. Down at the bottom, it has standards and indicators, and he selected two or three of the indicators in each standard. So those are the ones that we are addressing. Now, if you want to think about for next year, you could put that in as well as something else, but that, most of the ones that we are addressing now. So we're not addressing all 40, we're addressing the two or three that he has indicated. Does that make sense, Steven?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Suzanne. And what time do we select indicators ourselves or refine them?
Well, we would have to do, we talk about his goals for next year, probably at the workshop, and he shares his goals. If there's a particular area you would like us have him to focus on, we should bring that up to the committee and, and have a conversation then, so that he's prepared for that for next year.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
And just remember, if I could, David, one more thing, that our evaluations are in fact public. It's a public report, so what we say in our individual evaluations, we'll go to David, but those are, those are public for the public to review.
Mariah?
Can you just tell me when we got the form? Or did we get the form that we're supposed to fill in by email? And where that is? Can it be resurfaced? Because I can't find it. I know I have the email from Linus, but what the form is, I don't know.
Looks like Jennifer has a quick answer to that.
It's in the files for this meeting, Mariah.
I was gonna say, it also, it's an attachment. There are two emails from Dr. Gillery, and they are attachments in those emails.
Thank you.
And Dr. Gillery, I just wanted to confirm, there are, there are nine indicators that you have chosen. Is that correct?
You're gonna put me on the spot for counting?
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I had the correct information so that when I was completing my forms.
There were two, there were two or three, I think, under each standard.
So I see standard, I'm looking and just, I see three under standard one, and I see two under standard two, and two under standard three, and two under standard four, so that sounds about right.
Okay, that's right.
That's right, Suzanne. Okay, great. I have the correct.
That's what I have down.
And this, we're using the same, the form is the same as the 2020 form. They haven't updated the form. I have a form dated as current as 2020. Is that correct? I don't think that's changed since, okay, good. I just want to make sure I have the correct information before I started filling it out. And Chair Pearlman, you would like that submitted electronically to you?
Yes, on Monday, if you prefer not to do electronically, we can talk offline about that.
No, electronics, fine. I'm just gonna, I would like to do it prior to Monday. I'm hoping not to get it to you at the last minute.
The sooner the better.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? No? So that brings us to a sad or perhaps bittersweet portion of this evening's meeting, which is a farewell and thank you to our outgoing Deputy Superintendent of Student Services, Casey No. Miller, and to our outgoing Principal of Early Education, Regina Watts. And I believe that we have some senior leadership who are going to offer some words about the two of them. So who would like to go first?
I would, Chairman Pearlman, if that's okay.
Right ahead.
I'm gonna jump in early on before the tears start flowing. So I was very intentional about trying to go first here. And, you know, first, I was asked to speak about Casey, and I just want to, before I jump into Casey, I just wanted to also send my well wishes to Regina. Regina was one of the first people that I met when I started in the public schools of Brooklyn, and I didn't know anyone. And I remember her coming to my office and saying, you know, "Let me show you some beep sites." And she was just so engaging and kind and showed me that early childhood spirit that is just, you know, is just what, what we early childhood educators do. And so Regina, we're gonna miss you so much. And you have done such an incredible job. You're always working in service of children. And Margaret, we are, we are ready to welcome you, and we know that you are going to be absolutely amazing. And also know that Regina, you are irreplaceable. So I just want to take a moment to say that. We're really gonna miss you, Regina. And then Ms. No. Miller. We have our weekly meeting times, otherwise known as Miller time. And so, you know, what I want to say is, one, until anyone has sat on the fifth floor, I don't think anyone understands how difficult Casey's role is. I think my role is difficult, but I think Casey's role is difficult, that times 100. And so, you know, first and foremost, the, the knowledge that you bring to this work, the expertise that you bring, Casey, was like no other in terms of dealing with students and thinking about different funding issues and legal issues. And I know that you had to get up to speed pretty quickly, and you did that. And I see even now, as a principal, I reached out to you all the time for support, to ask questions, and that continues with my colleagues. And I think that just speaks to how much we trust you and trust your judgment. And so it's that level of expertise that is a huge factor in why we love you. But I think even more than that, Casey, is just who you are as a person. You're so even keeled, such a problem solver. We could come to you with any problem, and you say, "Come on, have a seat." You take out the candy bowl, and then we get to problem solving. And so that was one thing that certainly made my role coming into the deputy superintendent role that much easier was the collaboration that we had with one another and your ability just to look at the work in a very solutions-oriented way and then keep the work going. So that is a tremendous piece, but then also just the kindness that you bring to the work. You're such a great listener. We're gonna miss your laugh on the fifth floor. When you laugh on the fifth floor, they could probably hear you at Pierce, Casey. But we love that, and we are going to miss that. And Newton is getting a real gem in you, and so we are just so thankful for you. And I'm gonna stop now because I feel my, my voice is trembling a little bit, so.
Thank you. Helen, go ahead.
Yeah, did we get to, to roast her or to? No, I, I was just gonna, I was reflecting now as you were talking, Leslie, and thinking about when I was actually on the committee that hired Casey. And I remember talking with her and, and finding out about her in that interview. And, you know, it was, it was clear that, that she had the capability to do the job, even though she hadn't done it before. And she, she definitely rose to the occasion, and I'm just so sad you're going. I can't tell you. I really wish that we, that you were staying here, and I, you know, I wish you the best. So thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, David. Yeah, Casey, you know, I do remember when Andrew first suggested that you would, you were candidate for the job, I don't know if you remember. And I thought, oh, dear, she hasn't done this before, and it's such a hard job. And I don't know if this is gonna work for you. And so he said, "Oh, go talk to her, go talk to her." And so you did. You welcomed me in the office, and we sat down and we talked. And, and we knew that there'd be some challenges, and there was a lot to learn, and you just did it. And whenever I was on the fifth floor, I'd try and stop by. You'd always say, "Come on in and let's talk." And I really enjoyed our conversations because they were substantive. They were a challenge intellectually, and I know that you had the students and the staff, you know, at your heart, in your heart. And you, you rose to the occasion, so, you know, Newton's gain is certainly our loss. And, but you're next door, so, you know, you can always come back, you know, we're right. You know where we are, so I will miss you. Thank you so much, Casey, for your service.
Andy?
Yeah, I haven't been around as long as Helen and Suzanne, but I also wanted to thank you, Casey, for all that you've done to serve our kids, and in particular, for the central role that you played in reopening schools during the pandemic, which I don't think has been sufficiently appreciated. And you were also very kind to me when I first came on school committee. I was like a clueless new person, and I just learned a lot from you about what it takes to run a district. Although I think I still don't fully grasp the complexity of the job that you've been doing here. So congratulations. I'm going off to a job that's, I guess, twice as big. And I'm really gonna miss you here. Thanks.
Jennifer?
Not sure that I can, I can do this. Thank you, justice, Casey. But thank you for, for all of the work that you've done. I've really enjoyed working with you, and it's a. I've really enjoyed working with you, and it's a tough job, and it's a lot to balance. I really don't know that I can, I can do this justice. I really appreciate our conversations and working together, and all of the support that you've given to us for all the work that you've done with our students. And, and I'm sorry to see you go so far away, and I really miss working with you. So I wish you all the best in your new job. I hope you really enjoy it, but I'll miss working with you here in Brookline. And I wish you all the best, and, and thank you so much for all of the, all of your years here in Brookline. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, you're the one not losing her.
I know, I'm winking. I'm winking.
Maria?
I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been to work with you, Casey. And, and as everyone said, you know, those moments where we've gotten to really talk about details and to, to have that conversation has been so valuable. Are we allowed to talk about Regina too? I wasn't sure if this was just the Casey bit, or if we can say things about Regina too? Are we doing both right now or no?
Why do I do one at a time?
Okay, great. Then, then Casey, I, I am happy for you, but I really am sad to see you go. And thank you for everything.
I would also like to echo the sentiments of the other school committee members. Casey, you were extremely helpful in providing your perspective of sort of the hands-on, day-to-day operational side of policies. So I really appreciated, in my capacity as a member of the Policy Subcommittee and then Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, your help in sort of allowing me to visualize what policies would actually mean on a day-to-day level. So as others have said, our loss is Newton's gain. And hopefully you will find some ways to come back to Brookline.
Val?
So, everything that they said, but also the pieces that maybe a lot of the community didn't see, but that you were such an integral part of when the Stop Asian Hate signs were going up around town. I don't know how many people know that Casey was intimately involved in that process and, and getting those signs out and advocating, and just a part of, of the broad Brookline community. So in addition to special education and nursing and guidance and everything else under the sun, she's also been such a fantastic member of supporting our desperately impacted communities in particular. So thank you so much, and we'll come visit you in Newton. We'll stalk you there. Thanks.
Stephen?
Yeah, I don't have anything new to add, but I didn't want to not say thank you also. I just, I had very little chance to work with you, Casey, and I regret that. And I'm glad that you took Andy and me into your confidence when preparing some of your presentations, and I appreciated the chance to talk some of the issues through before you presented them, and I just really enjoyed working with you. So I wish you all the best.
Janae?
Thank you. I was just hoping to jump in really quickly to just echo Leslie's comments as one of your fellow senior staff members, and everything else that's been said. Casey, you are such a treasure. You're a firecracker. We are so gonna miss you. Thank you for your love for kids, and which led everything. So we're gonna miss you, and just want to say thank you.
Well, I'll jump in here and, and take the, the thank yous in a different direction. Casey, in addition to what everyone has shared, Casey also introduced me to some special chips that I can only have once a year because they elevate your blood pressure so much. First time in my life that my blood pressure has been above 110, thanks to those chips. So thank you, Casey, for, for, for putting me on the edge.
I just wanna say, thank you, Casey. I am going to truly miss you. Similar to food, Casey brings me apples and peanut butter every morning. And it may sound simple, but it means a lot to me. It's my, when she felt it was my favorite snack, she made sure that I felt special in this role, being a new director, being on the executive leadership team, being pretty much like, you know, this year bringing in the freshman rookie. It is, it really means a lot to me, and you know, you're special to me, and I won't call you what I call you in public. My own second. She's my little bits. I'm six-four, she's five-two. And we work great together. So I'm gonna miss you, and I wish you the best in everything that you do from now and going forward.
Nancy?
Casey, thank you for everything that you've done. I didn't have very much time to work with you, but I just wanted to say thank you. I know I owe you a banana bread recipe. And, and what, what are the chips? What are the chips? What are they?
I'll send you the link. They are chicken skins. So they're not chips. They're fried chicken skins.
Oh, my God.
Flavored with honey and sriracha.
Oh, my God. Yeah, I need that link. I'll trade, I'll trade you. Thanks again, Casey. I wish you all the best.
I was being good by calling them chips.
I can't wait to have them. Anyway, Casey, I wish you all the best.
Regina? You're on mute, Regina?
I was a little emotional, so I wasn't gonna say anything. But when Dr. Gillery brought up the chips, I was, what I was thinking about with you, Casey, is when after leadership meetings, we're talking about ordering lunch, you're usually talking about ordering french fries or, and doing something fun and some great restaurants. So I so appreciate the, the fun and joy you bring to everyday life events. So I, besides the fact, all, when you first got the position, I was so happy that you were a psychologist, and I thought, oh, it's, and you've really used those skills in making decisions, and I've so appreciated that, and always felt like I could go to you for help. So thank you.
Erin?
Similar to Regina, I wasn't gonna say anything because I know that I will start crying, as you can hear. I really can't even express like how much Casey means to me as a new, a new mother. I don't speak. I just know I speak for everyone when I say I'm really gonna miss you. And just what you do and bring to everybody, and the strength that you have, and how you've helped me advocate being a new mom just means a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I say a few things, David?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So thank you, everyone, for your words tonight. I wasn't prepared to say anything tonight, but I feel that it's important. My daughter has a event at the high school next week at 7:00 PM that I have to attend. It's a I'm at a loss words. I'm sorry. She plays the flute in fourth grade, and they have a concert, a band concert. That's what that's called next week. So this might be my last full school committee meeting, but to all of the school committee members, past and present, you have all pushed me, sometimes to the edge, but never to the point where I felt like I couldn't handle it. And I think it's because you held me with with love and understanding, but while also pushing me because I think you saw that I could do it. And for that, I am forever grateful. It has been an incredible five years, and I am a firm believer that if it doesn't scare you, it's not worth doing. And so for me, Newton was my next stretch point, and that's what it was. I'm not running from Brookline. I just have to continue to stretch myself, and I know you all know that. But want to thank you again for the opportunity for me to cut my teeth in Brookline. I'll never forget it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Casey. All right, and that brings us to Regina. So who's going to start for Regina? Go ahead, Ms. Everhart.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and I want to thank the school committee for inviting me this evening to speak a few words about Regina. So I'm gonna tell a little story first. Beep is celebrating 50 years in September of 2022. We, we share that, we share a story with families when they enroll in Beep about the beginning of Beep. And for the 50 years that Beep has been around, Regina has been involved for 33 of them. We tell the story that Beep started out as a general education program with our specialized services in Newton. Kind of a fun connection, don't you think? And Regina's office was in Newton on Walnut Street. And so when you think about that, that profound in the way that Regina's professional life and the evolution of Beep are intertwined, this is a really big moment for Beep and for Dr. Regina Watts, and a big change for the program. I've only been in Brookline for five years, and it is like, so I feel kind of weird being the one talking about Regina first, but Regina is the consummate professional. You know, there are three really big components of being a principal. That's the engagement with families, the engagement with students, and the engagement with, with educators. And I've seen Regina have some difficult conversations with parents about some, about maybe our diagnosis they received, or about some really bad days that they're having. And she's always there to guide them, support them, to give them hope with grace and kindness, and it's amazing to watch her interact with them. And I've seen the joy that she takes in, in spending time with children. This week, she had pizza lunch with one of the students who won that as the prize in the auction. And you would have thought that Regina was the movie star of the century with the pizza and the cupcakes for this little boy over at Beep at Beacon. And the same goes for Regina. But I think the biggest part of Regina's soul is that she's a mentor, right? I have seen, I have seen her in the five years that I've worked here help parents become teachers, VCBAs, teachers become vice principals, principals. She's always saying to someone, so have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? She's always helping people grow, and she is one of the best humans that I have ever known. So as I find myself in this position, because one day Regina said to me, have you ever thought about? And so here we are. But, you know, in 2020, our program went through some really difficult times, and the pandemic like upended everything for Beep. And with her steadfast, analytical, gracious, generous heart, Regina led us through that time and brought us to today where we are today, thriving, as we've been talking about with our educators. So on behalf of all the parents, all the students, and all the educators that you have made such a difference for, I thank you, Regina. I am going to miss you more than words can possibly say. I don't know what the next part of your story is, but I'm looking forward to hearing about it as you move on to the next adventure. So on behalf of Beep, I really thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Who would like to go next? Helen, go ahead.
I wanted to get my hand up first there because I've known Regina, I think, basically since I've been on the committee, but, but more so in the last few years since she's become the principal. And she's amazing. She is such a team player, such a problem solver. She doesn't say, I can't. She says, let's figure it out. And, you know, it's just been amazing. I, I've been the, you know, the liaison to the early childhood program and seen her work through things, find solutions. And, and as Margaret said, she's just an amazing person. I don't think there's a mean bone in her body anywhere. You know, and I, I just, I feel lucky to, 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 to know Regina and, and to feel that, you know, she's a friend, just as Casey. These are people who we will see again, hopefully, and, and continue relationships. And it's, it's very sad, but I understand you want to go out and do some training, and I'm gonna help you with that. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, Regina, I'm so gonna miss you because, you know, when you're having a bad day, especially in administration, building administration, I would always just go to kindergarten or preschool. We have K1, K2 in Boston, but it's the same that you have, you know, the, the program is wonderful. You're so passionate. You're such an early childhood educator. It just comes out of you right through your skin. You can just feel it all the time. And you have that warmth and that laugh that the children need and the staff needs. So, you know, thank you so much for that. I truly enjoy visiting all your classrooms and all your programs. They are just phenomenal. And I just wish you all the best. I hope you'll do something in the field still to share that wisdom. You have years and years of wisdom, and I, we don't want to lose that. So hopefully you'll be consulting or coaching or mentoring, or just plain helping out would be great. Best of luck, Regina. We want to hear what you're doing.
Jennifer?
It's so funny. I'm like jotting notes about all the things that I want to say to Regina, and I'm like, oh, everybody's saying the same things. So you, you know, you're hearing the, the real things about Regina. Thank you so much, Regina. You know, you have such a real passion for our youngest learners. For, you come to every meeting with such an amazing positive attitude, a smile, and such real leadership, especially during the pandemic. You had come in and to this leadership role as the principal of Beep right before the pandemic, and then had to lead us through this really tricky time, and a lot of changes in our locations and our leases, and, and so much was going on, and then we hit the pandemic. And your positivity is just infectious. You just have such a positive attitude, Regina, and it's just wonderful. You have a real can-do attitude. And I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for, for your dedication to our youngest people and to our school system. Thank you so much, Regina. And I wish you well wherever you're going, whatever you do, and if you want to come back, there's always space in Brookline.
Andy?
Yeah, Regina, I'd also like to just express my admiration for how you've steered deep through this extremely turbulent and uncertain period. I mean, when I came on the school committee in 2020, there was serious doubt about whether Beep would survive the pandemic. But, you know, you inspired utter confidence, and you got us through it. So yeah, I mean, beyond that, I think in my particular role on the school committee, I should thank you for the probably hundreds of hours that you've devoted over the last few years to helping our negotiations team understand the, the implications of some of the proposals that we were, that we were thinking about. That was, that was an incredible labor, and I'm really grateful to you for sticking through with that. So, you know, I know that Beep is in very, very good hands, but I'm still gonna miss you a lot.
Casey?
Thank you. Regina, my fellow psychologist, thank you so much for holding Beep and doing all that you have for, gosh, is this 30-plus decade, 33 decades in Brookline? It's incredible. Helen said you don't have a mean bone in your body, and I would say that's true. And I would add that you are one of the strongest leaders I've ever worked with. Whenever we have partnered together with any issue, you come, you've identified the issue, you know exactly what the options are, and we talk through it. And then you push through every single time, and it's so incredible to watch, and it's so inspiring. I, like Margaret said, I'm looking forward to see what your next chapter is, and I hope I'm a part of it, or at least just I get to follow you and see what you're up to next. Thank you so much for sharing your kind heart with us.
Bria?
Of course, I want to echo what everyone else has said about how wonderful Regina is. And I just want to provide a little anecdote, which is that, you know, because I have a rising kindergartner, I'm often in the different Beep buildings as we've been doing, you know, different whatever little things you have to do to like meetings to get ready for things. And also, you know, we are over in Beep a couple of days a week. And it's amazing to me that I feel like more often than not, whatever building I'm at, Regina is there, like no matter what time of the day it is, no matter what building I'm at, Regina like happens, like she's like by the front door welcoming people. She's like on the playground saying hello to people. It's amazing to me that there must be like four Regina's because she is everywhere, and it's wonderful, you know, just that level of dedication that she is constantly, you know, there at the front lines, at the front door, meeting people, greeting people, saying hello, and it's, it's really lovely to see that, not just through the school committee lens, but as a parent, especially a parent of a young child who's, who's coming into the system to have that amazing warm touch from, from moment one. So thank you, Regina, for everything.
I want to thank you, Regina, for your leadership in also the capital side. So the number of capital improvement meetings you attended to address what sometimes unfortunately has been a nomadic program with classes moving from one building to another, to another, to another. But you always found a way to make it work, and you've always put families first, whether it's advocating to keep Beep affordable for as many people as possible, whether it's addressing those geographics. whether it's addressing those geographic stability issues about where BEEP classrooms would end up. As some others have commented on the warmth that you exude. I've noticed that firsthand. I remember quite well when I visited the BEEP Center at Clark Road. And you gave me a tour of the different classrooms and I remember you high fiving a student as he entered and climbed the steps and how excited he was to see you. And that's somewhat unusual. Sometimes you'll see maybe a preschooler happy to be with a teacher. But it seemed that you have an individual relationship with every single student despite being the program administrator. So that's something that was quite remarkable for me to notice. And we're definitely going to miss you and miss that diverse array of talents that you brought to the position. Valerie?
So Regina, I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself, but also my kids. I think you were probably the first educator, one of the first educators they both interacted with in Brookline. And you were always calm. I don't know how you were always calm. I was always a wreck and you were always calm. So thank you for, for being a wonderful foundation and starting place for my family in Brookline.
So I would like to offer three points on Regina. David echoed the first one in visiting every BEEP building, every BEEP classroom. There isn't a kid that Regina does not know. And she can tell you the history of that kid and that progression that they've been making over their time in BEEP. She can also do the same for each and every staff member at BEEP. And I've always been impressed with her knowledge. She walks me through the classroom. She's able to tell me exactly what's happening in the curriculum, where things are situated, what happened before and what's coming next. So that's, that's amazing in that regard. Regina was actually the catalyst for me visiting as many classrooms, just about every classroom on the first, the first month, month, first weeks of school.
The first day.
Oh, that was first day. So we went to a location and we went through the rooms and I said, well, is this everyone? She says, no, there are more buildings. I said, well, we have to see everyone. And so she says, are you sure? And so off we went to visit each and every BEEP classroom, Regina leading the way. And when it came down to retirement, Regina had given me some early indicators that she was contemplating this at the beginning of the year. And I said, let's not talk about that right now. We have too much going on this year to even, to even think about that. And so then mid-year, she says, oh Linus, I said, no, we're not going to talk about it now. And so finally at BEEP Putterham, she called me in her office and I knew then just from the inflection in her voice that this was the time she had made the decision and certainly as she says in consultation with her husband. And so she sat me down and we talked for an extensive period of time about this. So Regina, again, thank you for your leadership with BEEP. It's been awesome to spend this time with you in this space.
Thank you, everyone. It's, your kind words mean so much. It really does. And it truly has been my privilege to work in Brookline. I started, I think in nineteen eighty-nine. And at that time, my, my car was my office. And of course that was before cell phones. So now my car is still my office because we spend a lot of time commuting, talking on the phone, doing many things. So I've been, I've been so lucky to recreate myself every eight or 10 years here. You know, I started as a school psychologist at Lincoln Primary, eventually added the early childhood piece. And that's when I ended up with my office in Newton and became a team facilitator, an early childhood coordinator and a principal. And I really wasn't, being a principal wasn't on my hopes and dreams list, if you ask me. What I do, my heart is in school psychology. I love talking to kids. I love being with kids. I love helping teachers understand how children learn and think. And I really do value talking to families about their children to help them understand so that their, their journey in education is, is better. And so this job has allowed me to do that and this district has allowed me to do that. And it's only because I've worked with some really truly amazing people. And it's, it's been great. I didn't look for the principal job and then when I, it came knocking and I first said, I'm not sure. I don't think so. I told Andrew Botino first and then went back and said, okay, I'll do it. And I am so glad I did. It was really, it was really the highlight and the best thing I could have done despite the pandemic and all of the other problems that we, you know, have dealt with in the last three years. It's, it, it's just been so wonderful, helped me. I'm definitely going to recreate myself again. I don't know what I'm going to do next. I, you know, have a little bit of time and space and figure it out again. So you may not, this may not be the last of me. You never know. So thank you, thank you, thank you for, for everything. And it's, it's been a privilege to work in this district, truly. So many resources. And, and people who truly care about education, including yourselves.
Thank you Regina.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, that brings us to the next item on our agenda. The superintendent's report and spotlight on excellence.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. We are going to flip things around a little bit because we have some students that we are balancing their work schedules and those types of things. So we're going to begin with our spotlight on excellence and then I will come back to the, to the superintendent's update report. This evening, we're going to welcome four Brookline High School seniors, or should I say BHS graduates. All four students were part of our joyous commencement ceremony last Sunday at Fisher Hill Park. So congratulations, BHS recent graduates. The students with us this evening were also honored at the Brookline Asian American Family Network Seventh Annual Award Ceremony held on May eleventh. We're very excited to be able to shine the spotlight on excellence on the following talented members of the BHS community. We will listen to all four honorees this evening. And I will then open it up for the committee members to offer your congratulations. First, and I'm going to introduce everyone and then they will come in this order to, to keep the program tight for us. First, I would like to introduce NJ Norris, who will be heading to the College of the Atlantic in the fall to study marine biology and environmental science. NJ won top honors at the Baffin Awards Ceremony for their essay, The Plight of the Pika Acerica. I will turn the microphone over to NJ now to read their essay. And then, then I'll come back with what I'll do so that we keep it together. NJ, go ahead.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is NJ Norris. I use they/them pronouns. I'll be reading my essay. In Korea, when the persimmon harvest is finished, it is custom to leave a few at the top of each tree for the magpies. This is known as gachibap or the magpie meal. Korean magpies symbolize sturdy spirit and prosperity, white striped givers of good fortune. In America, however, they are seen as the opposite, conniving, greedy inconveniences who thieve with glitters and leave the rest. To be Asian American is to feel like a magpie in the latter sense, a thief, hungry to experience your culture through a horde of its shiniest, sweetest elements and nothing more. It is the shock of guilt when persimmon nectar hits your tongue as if you are doing something inherently wrong by reaching for a taste of your heritage. Picking at sickly sweet leftovers stuck a treetop away from the people on the ground, you are left with nothing but the gnawing fear that you are no better than a tourist. The ache of being an outsider is not exclusive to the Asian aspect of being Asian American. America often rejects us as well, forcing us into the cliche of the perpetual foreigner as if we have any less of a right to the country we fought to make our home. To be Asian American is to know you will be seen as exotic, other, no matter what you do. It is to know any piece of your culture you display can be turned against you. If it is not accepted, it will be spit in your face. And if it is deemed palatable, it will be swallowed and appropriated, reduced to nothing but another prop in the glimmering parody trying to replace your reflection. The only option that will not get you hurt is to reject your culture entirely, to try to eradicate your otherness and become quietly American. Many of our families were forced to choose that option. Many of us are forced to do the same today. In the ripples of that choice, a gap forms between Asian Americans and Asian culture, widening with the ocean that separates our continents. When we as Asian Americans second guess our right to our own identities, agonize over whether or not what we present of ourselves is consumable, we are entering a conflict skewed against us from the start. If we present sweetness, we fear being devoured. If we present a stringency, we fear being thrown out and left to rot. Made to constantly criticize our own appearance, to be Asian American becomes bitterness, imposter syndrome, guilt, a hesitance between our heritage and our outstretched hands, scared our fingerprints will stand out orange and saccharine with the phantom residue of our greed. The grand American truth of it is that we will always feel as though we are stealing from our own culture if the only definition of the magpie we recognize is the American thief. The grand Asian American truth of it is that we cannot steal what has been ours from the beginning. All of what it means to be us, the sweet, the bitter and everything in between, was never anyone else's to claim. We have always had the right to celebrate our own culture without caveat, to rejoice and create and yes, even make mistakes without the specter of self doubt looming over our shoulder. Loving who we are and where we come from, taking pride in just one facet of our heritage on our own terms is an act of rebellion against the systems and people that would see us quietly disappear. To be Asian American often means to live in distance, distanced from your ancestry, from your culture, from yourself. But even as that feeling lingers, being Asian American means so much more than that. Being Asian American means a range of experiences as vast as either continent. It can mean loss and struggle, but it can also mean joy, community and connection. It can mean creating a kinder definition than the misinterpretation bandied around our ankles. It can mean feasting on persimmons that were always meant for us, the space between the treetops and the ground noted and set aside. One day we will know we were never thieves for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you NJ. Next, I am pleased to introduce Ellie Hyde, another Baffin Essay Contest winner. Essie will be attending Oberlin College in the fall and plans to study psychology. I now turn the microphone over to Ellie to read her essay, Good Discomfort.
Good discomfort. I was at a violin lesson of all places where I heard the most influential phrase of my life. I wasn't particularly fond of the piece I was learning and had conveniently forgotten to prepare it. My teacher asked me why I was stumbling through the notes. One week was enough time to learn it. I admitted that I had barely touched the piece and confessed that I disliked practicing it because it made me uncomfortable. I despised the way that I wasn't used to strange fingerings and how they made me feel like my fingers were getting tied into one giant knot. I loathe the single frustration that I got when I skipped the hand position. And most of all, I hated how making mistakes made me feel. My teacher sighed and responded, if you feel completely comfortable when you're practicing, that means you're not making any progress. Discomfort means that you're challenging yourself and that you're growing. I didn't truly understand the gravity of what she said until I was doing a research project on Japanese folklore. Although I was raised in America, my maternal Japanese family had a great influence on me. They made sure to raise me to be proud of my heritage and I was immersed in the language and culture. Unfortunately, I also picked up some of their ideological shortcomings, such as focusing on the present and being ignorant of the past. Whenever I was in Japan and the morning news showed disputes between Japan and China or South Korea, my relatives would lament how China and South Korea kept bringing up the past. When I was younger, I had no knowledge of the history of Japanese actions in World War Two. I do not know of the tens of thousands of women who were violated by imperial soldiers, nor did I know about the millions of innocent people murdered in the name of a divine answer. I completely believed that Japan was innocent, that China and South Korea were being unreasonable. When Asian immigrants survive in America, they are seen as nothing other than Asians. To someone who cannot differentiate between the many countries in Asia, where you come from is of the least concern. Because of this, I had no pressure on me as a Japanese person to educate myself on what my country was responsible for. I was immersed in the movement of Pan-Asianism and would always ask it. If we're all Asian, why can't we just get along? Why does anyone care so much about the past? Imagine my discomfort as a junior when I found a book in the library that held detailed accounts and images of atrocities that Imperial Japanese Army committed in Nanjing. Not only did the book prove to me that China and South Korea were not exaggerating the past, it presented the hard to swallow pill that my country was not as flawless as I wanted to believe. I could have put the book down. It made me beyond uncomfortable. I felt so ashamed to be from a country that had committed atrocities. I closed the cover and placed the book back on the shelf, planning to deny everything I had just read. As I tried to walk away, I felt a dizzying feeling of guilt crawl up in my stomach and the words of my violin teacher played in my head. Discomfort means that you're challenging yourself, that you're growing. The idea of Japan's innocence, I had no left fault. All the information added consumed in my life account stared back at me asking, are you going to correct this all now? Are you going to grow? I picked the book up again. Similar to I'm learning a wrong technique on the violin, I'm learning beliefs I grew up with was excruciating. More times than I would like to admit, I felt the same loose and sense of shame and guilt. I'm sure that I will feel it many more times as I continue to grow and educate myself. But this time I know that my discomfort is an opportunity for me to learn. In America, I'm Asian before my nationality and for my Chinese and free infants. However, if I want to be a positive part of this Pan-Asian American movement, I must continue challenging my views and bettering myself. Understanding the past is the best way I can understand those near me and that is the best way for us to be united as Asian Americans.
Thank you Ellie. Finally, I would like to introduce Jean Herr and Sam Lee, who co-produced a documentary video that debuted at the Baffin Awards Ceremony. What Does It Mean to Be Asian American at BHS? The full video was shown at the Baffin Ceremony and is available on the Big Group website. I encourage you to watch it. For tonight, we have an edited version for you to enjoy. Please turn up your volume and note there's closed captioning for the parts of the dialogue that are a bit harder to hear. I'm very pleased now to introduce Jean Herr and Sam Lee so that they can introduce you to their documentary video.
Hi, again, my name is Jean Herr. Unfortunately, I had to join from my car as you can see. But like mentioned, we're showing a shortened version. And if you have access to that link in the descriptions to the YouTube video, there's actually another link to the full version. These two videos are only accessible through links. But yeah, I guess just a short like background. Sam and I, as well as our friend Yuki, who happens to be a co, who used to be a co-president at our Asian American club at BHS, we are all walking out, coincidentally out of our and we all thought of the idea to remake this video just to make it up to date considering all the that have happened during the pandemic and just during, since the news. So yeah, thank you for inviting us and we hope you enjoy.
Are we supposed to be hearing something?
Are we supposed to be hearing something?
We still can't hear.
Is there anyone who can adjust the volume?
Let me go over to Betsy here, just a second.
Oh, sorry. Just start again.
Sorry, Robin, maybe you could turn on closed captioning?
I immigrated here when I was seven years old. So for a while, I really considered myself an Asian American. At the same time, I was fully Asian American until seven years old. On, I've spent all of my life here, living in the US. So I've really struggled with my Asian American sign, my identity a lot at home. Especially Chinese, um, my first generation. But I think especially in the first years, or superior, um, I've really felt my place as an Asian American here. Which is something which especially in our community, I think, right? Especially like all the other Asian communities. That is, in general, we should be, especially in the in the Asian community, in particular. It's, it's like, it's an acting, um, it's a past report, very, I have always seen strange stuff and things like that. I internalize all of them and just say, "Oh, you have to learn one, like, I shouldn't speak all of them." Then with the pandemic, if I heard news about the pandemic, it's something like that. I feel like that's actually hard to really face, and I have a responsibility to see something in my life. But yeah, I started my needed things to include, I need to be principled, like, age-based, Asian-based, Asian-based. So I wanted to talk about delicious, my language, I love my language, and I mean, it gives me a lot of strain to listen to, like, uh, because of my language. A lot of stuff that we teach, I remember in ninth grade, it was one quote about being, it was something kind of debate to India. I was so excited that I would be on top of this whole term, how to just show India such a, like, on very cannibalistic way, which really hurt my, the first time I was like, ashamed of India. I think it's something that our community and Christian friends, especially and I would say is to push for the, for the whole of race to like, literally, what's your way to, make sure that they can see you here, and make sure that they know that you're an Indian, you know, a communist, and that you deserve a certain that you deserve, which you have, and that, just like this, but here, I don't remember. And that's something, so I would say that we, John, and other institutions, we, uh, treat great that we, um, we issue, which I will kind of read back out of a history book. To which might be switched to, it's, yeah, we need that to be so when we try, we must, we must it is like, to me, that you still make sure that they think you can be yourself, not try to be somewhere else, or try to hide your Asian-ness to fit in into the American culture. You find your people that you're but you're not damaging, we need some event that is important to add it, and then you and if you don't have that speed, you're
So thank you so much, Jean and Sam. Sam, you didn't have a moment to introduce yourself? Would you like to do so now?
Oh, yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Sam Lee. I'm a senior along with Jean. And so, just a bit about how what I contributed to the video. So as you, Jean mentioned, Yuki, Jean and I were talking about kind of revamping this video. There was a similar one created a couple of years ago. You know, and as Jean said, we wanted to remake it. So Jean, having great, you know, filming and editing skills, took on the actual interviewing and like editing portion of the video, while I did a lot of the outreach thing and coordinating. And yeah, I know the audio wasn't the best, but we hope that you'll be able to check out the link to the full video, as Jean mentioned earlier. And yeah, thank you again.
Thank you all so much. And that concludes our Baffin Award winners. If committee members have any comments or questions for folks.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I just want to say I thought that was really powerful, and I just want to thank all of the presenters tonight. That was, it's a perspective that it's not easy for us to have as school committee members or as humans. So thank you.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to thank and congratulate all of our amazing young people for all of their amazing work. These young people are leaders. They are so wise. And if you are interested in watching the, either the full videos or their full presentations, the full video of the Baffin Awards are available out there, either on Big or YouTube. It's amazing. I am so constantly impressed when I listen to our students come and present their work to us. They are amazing. You are all amazing. You will do amazing things. I get chills and feel so hopeful for the world when I listen to your writing and the work that you're doing and the videos that you make. The future is bright with you all in it. So I thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us tonight. I truly, truly mean the words that I say. They are, they are not fluff. They are true. And I hope that you can revisit your words in the future. And when, when, when sometimes we lose sight of things, that you can come back to these, because sometimes, as adults, we, we lose sight of the things that we once knew that was true in our hearts when we were your age. And when I listen to the words that you say, I hope that you can come back to these, to these words and revisit the truth in your words, because it's powerful. So, thank you.
Nancy?
I just wanted to say, wow, that was the po- the essays, the, the, the passion that came through was just amazing. I was touched. I think I'm gonna cry again. And I, I, a lot of that, what, what you, what you said and in the film, it resonated with me too, as an Asian American too, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for finding the courage to find your voices, because that's hard at your age sometimes. But I just wanted to say, thank you for the courage and maturity of that, to be able to speak out. Because it's, it's, sometimes you really have to dig really deep to find that courage. And I could not be proud of you. And I echo what Stephen and Jennifer said. The, the future is so much brighter, because the, and the world is better because you're here. So thank you.
Suzanne?
I just, again, I want to say thank you, like everyone else did, how powerful the words were. And that by sharing your words, you were able to share with us what you're feeling. And I know some say they're doing marine biology, or I don't know where everybody's going, but you do have powerful words to share. Excuse me, and you shared them in such a meaningful and passionate way. As Jennifer said, don't lose those words. Keep them coming, even if you're in a field that we don't write a lot, because that is your voice, and that's how we hear it. So thank you very much.
I also want to thank our student presenters. It was extremely impressive. Jay, your essay was so powerfully written and profound, the, your prose very eloquent. And I'm wondering if there's a particular author or authors or teacher or who would you say you draw from as your inspirations?
Um, for inspiration, a lot of different sources. Honestly, too many to list. I, I, I attribute a lot of my writing style to poetry. One of my personal favorite poets is Ocean Vuong, who is, I believe Vietnamese-American. His works are absolutely incredible. As for like, I think the person like in my life that has encouraged me to write the most, or the people would have to be my English teachers, specifically Ben Berman, Kira Flynn Carson, and Zach Brokenrope. I'm in this, or recent graduate of the SWS program at BHS and the English program there is, I think, what's really spurred me to work on writing as a craft. Thank you so much for your kind words.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, back to you, Dr. Valerie.
And with that, we want to show the certificate that our students will receive tonight. The Public Schools of Brookline shine the spotlight on excellence, and this happens to be Ellie's that I'm holding, is awarded to Ellie Hyde in recognition of the honors you received at the Seventh Annual Brookline Asian American Family Network Awards Ceremony, with our appreciation for your leadership in the BHS community and with our best wishes for your continued success. And that's what the certificate looks like. So each of you will be receiving that. All right, with that, Betsy's gonna pull back up the slides, presentations, and I know we're behind schedule now for my portion, so I'm gonna try to make up a little bit of time here. But we do have a couple of things we want to dig into. We've recently completed, on the last rotation of my formal school visits, I had Lawrence and Ridley today, Heath and Runkle on the sixth, Baker and Pierce on the second, and Lincoln on June first. Friday, I have Driscoll and BHS, and then I'll be doing my last round with Regina on the thirteenth. For some district-wide updates, just to make sure that the community is aware that town meeting voted to approve our budget of one hundred twenty-eight million, six hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars. So again, thank you to all of those that have been working with us so diligently on our budget proposal for this year. I want to offer a calendar, a school calendar update. June twenty-third will be a full day. I know that there have been a number of calendar issues that we've sent out, and so I will be noting, noticing the community of this change tomorrow. But the last full day of school for the district is June twenty-fourth. That will be a noon dismissal for all, and we know that Driscoll had a fire closure near them. And so they will also have to come back to school on the twenty-seventh, and that will also be a noon dismissal for Driscoll. Our materials fee program, we know that there's a lot of concern about program impact and that some are thinking that the, that there isn't a commitment to the materials fee, and that's not the case at all. We are continuing to, will continue to accept students on the space available cases, on a space available basis. This point, we had thirty-four applicants this year, and sixteen of those applicants were kindergarteners. So we accepted the full slate of our kindergarten applicants. And there are an additional eighteen that we'll continue reviewing as we get deeper into our enrollment and withdrawal season, and just to make sure that we can stand solidly on the acceptance of our materials fee students. And so that, those rolling admissions will happen through, throughout the summer, but definitely a firm response by mid, mid-August. I think we set the date at August 13th. The US Open will be at the Country Club starting next week. The town has shared a press release out late this afternoon with the latest road closure information. And we'll be communicating that out with the PSB community Friday. We are also working very closely with them on impacts to our transportation, both our yellow bus service, as well as our van service. And we also want to make sure that everyone that's driving, not just in that part of Brookline, but anywhere in Brookline, I think traffic is going to be heavy. So, we need to plan accordingly for that. Those that may not traditionally walk, you may want to consider walking, if that's at all a possibility for you. Also want to do a quick update on our deputy superintendent's search. We've lauded Casey with our sincere praise for her hard work. And she leaves big shoes for us to fill. But we're in the process of our round one interviews that are concluding. That group is now deliberating and will be advancing candidates to round two, which will include the senior team and a school committee representative. And then from there, that group will, then I'll interview the candidates that emerge from that group with the recommendation to school committee for their final approval. Certainly, if a candidate does not rise from this group, we'll then go through a similar process to identify an interim candidate with the same process of me interviewing with the school committee representative to then recommend to the full committee. So, we want you to know that that process is actively underway. Oh, before we move on, I didn't have on here, we're awaiting information from the Department of Health. The preliminary information that we have is that Norfolk County is still in the orange category as it pertains to mask. Initially, we were thinking that we would be coming out of that this year. But at this point, we're still under the purview of the Department of Health with masking. So, as soon as we get the latest update from them, from the Department of Public Health, then we will communicate that out if there's a change in what we currently doing. Next slide, again, a thank you to both Casey and Regina for your outstanding service to the Public Schools of Brookline. We just want to share out a Brookline Care sock drive. We had several of our BHS students that are engaged in this process. The goal is to raise $2,500 for 2,500 pairs of socks. And so, information about Brookline Cares, the sock donation can be found with the information that we have here, as well as their online website. So, we just want to acknowledge our students for their creativity in this service project. For community engagement, there have been several events that have happened. The Medco graduation, moving up ceremony, the ACE program went through PALS, SWS. And I know I'm leaving out some. We have our upcoming eighth grade moving on ceremonies that are also on the horizon. But lots of things are happening in and throughout our community. So, we're going to make sure that we push all of this information out tomorrow in our weekly update. On the 3rd, there was the Safe Routes to School Awards. And there's a little image there. And then certainly the BHS commencement ceremony that took place at Fisher Hill on the 5th. On the 7th, the boys tennis team is beginning their quest to be a four-peat for state champions. So, we want to wish them much success in this journey. Baker held a pride walk on the 8th. And as you can see, many of our sidewalks throughout, our crosswalks throughout Brookline are painted. And then yesterday, we also had a BHS ribbon cutting ceremony for 22 Tappan and the STEM building. So, again, thank you to our amazing community for your service and support of our students. And I believe that concludes the presentation for tonight.
Thank you Helen.
Thank you for your presentation. This has been terrific, the whole thing. Two things. One, I happened to run into Pete Rittenberg on the way back from the dedication. And he said the girls tennis team had won. I'm not sure where they are in the process right now of finals, but they also did us proud. I was wondering, since there are so many new school committee members, maybe at the next meeting, we could take five minutes just to go over the materials fee program. And the students that we've accepted over the years, the numbers each year, I think we have those statistics. And I think it would be important for people to know what we do do and how much we value that program by having this perk for teachers. And it's a perk for us too, because teachers remain here. And we really appreciate that. So, I think it would be great to just take five minutes and go over that the next time. Or whenever you want.
If I can do that.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then that takes us to public comments. We have 11 speakers lined up. So, we're going to be a little more rigorous about enforcing the two minutes per speaker. Up first is Marcy Miller. Something we're going to be doing a little bit differently now is we will be promoting you to panelists. So, you can turn your camera on if you so choose. Ms. Miller, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Doing well?
Hi, I know some of you. So, thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. I will be super quick, so my two minutes, I talk very quickly. So, I'll get right to the point. Helen, thank you so much for bringing up the materials fee. That's why I wanted to talk and just explain a little bit. I'll explain how the program works somewhat, but I'm sure Dr. Gillery will explain it a little bit better next time. So, thank you so much for letting me speak. I acknowledge that this is a superintendent decision. So, I wasn't sure if the school committee even knows about the materials fee. I know some people do. But just to explain, the materials fee is where Brookline employees can pay. I think we're just under $3,000 now per year to send our kids to the Brookline Public Schools as part of working in Brookline. And I know that some other educators are going to talk a lot about how we use this as a recruitment tool and one of the best ways to get really good people to come and work in the Brookline schools. I'm going to make my comments a little bit different. So, mine are a little bit more personal. But I started working here 22 years ago. My children are in kindergarten and first grade now at the Lawrence School. And I am thrilled that we, thrilled to pay the $3,000 so that they can come and get educated in a place where I've literally spent the majority of my adult life, probably the majority of my life at this point. It's sad to say, but, so I know that you're, I know that my argument is basically about the fact that I love my job and I want my kids to be here. But I want to explain a little bit more why. So, I pour everything I have into this job. And then when my two kids came along, my focus obviously changed a little bit. I didn't stop loving my job, but I started to view my actions and my work as if it will one day directly affect them, which I believe that it will. So, for example, a few years ago, I took on a new class. I took on the legal studies class. And every field trip, like to the Suffolk County Jail, every speaker, every single speaker, which we have a lot, every activity I plan, I think about, wow, I really hope my kids get to experience this class one day. Probably not as much, you know, in my class. But that everything I do is really about what's going to make this school better for my own kids, as selfish as that is. That's where my focus is, and I say most of our focus. Example two, my colleague Mark Wheeler and I just got back from a BEF-funded trip to the South. We went to Alabama, Mississippi, and Tennessee, where we basically scoped out a civil rights trip that we are planning on taking hopefully up to 20 kids on next year, which I will be coming back to in the fall to present that field trip. So, stay tuned for that. And as we're putting the trip together and making calls and calling hotels and calling van rentals and all these things, and thinking about all the different speakers that we're going to have meet us in different parts of the South. Again, I think about, I want my kids to go on this trip one day. So, I'm working 10 times harder, knowing that this will be hopefully an institutional trip that my kids can take one day. And then my third example, during pandemic, I was so adamant that teachers were essential workers. And I could not understand why the restaurants and trampoline parks were open, but not the schools. And I wanted my kids in school full-time. And so, I know Helen Charlepski, I called Helen literally in a panic, like in tears, asking for school to go back full-time because I wanted my kids to be in school. That did not make me many friends. But the fact that I'm pushing for schools to open for my kids meant that I obviously also was willing to go back full-time from the get-go and thought that that was essential. So, what I think, my point here is that I'm always going to push hard for what's best for my own kids. I want the best schools for my kids. I want the best committed teachers. I want the best books. I want the best curriculum. I want the best field trips. So, my motivation to work even harder and give even more comes from me having my kids in the district as well. So, I just want you to see that perspective and understand that our head of school, multiple administrators, they have kids at our materials fee. And I really, really don't want this, this to disappear as a lot of teachers who are coming in have older kids or maybe switch and decide they want to bring their kids to Brookline later, not just at kindergarten. So, again, I'm grateful that my kids are already in. But I just speak on behalf of others that we will work continuously, even harder than we already do, knowing that our kids are going to benefit from our hard work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Goldner. And just as a reminder, if you can please try to keep it to two minutes. That did go over, gave some leeway, but we do want to try to move things along. Go ahead, Mr. Goldner.
Hello, can you all hear me?
You can.
Okay. So, my name is Mark Goldner. I'm a 7th, 8th grade science teacher at the Heat School. I'm also chair of the BEU's grievance committee. I'm here to speak about BEU's effort to try to get the district to make our classrooms safe from excessive heat. During a particularly bad heat wave last spring, when students and teachers suffered fainting, asthma attacks, and other heat-related ailments, all exacerbated by masks, our desperate members asked us, as grievance committee people, to do something. There have been few moments in my time as grievance chair when I've received such an overwhelming call for help. So, we filed a grievance around the district's failure to maintain a safe and healthful workplace. This issue is not new. Last year, for over 10 years, we've been asking the school committee to commit in writing to a safe allowable temperature. Each time, our concerns have been dismissed by the school committee. To resolve the current grievance, the union is asking for a simple solution, a written commitment to a heat index trigger, a temperature and relative humidity level established by the National Weather Service, above which occupancy in a particular space for teaching and learning would not be allowed. If that space gets to a dangerous heat index, a particular class would be moved to a safer, cooler space. Finding temporary space for classrooms happens frequently for a variety of reasons. However, through a written commitment to a heat index trigger, management would be held accountable to make sure that permanent solutions are found, like more AC units in classrooms. But let's work together collaboratively and creatively to figure this problem out. But it starts with a firm commitment to a safe classroom. Management is adamant in its refusal to accept the BEU's proposal. We're still waiting for an answer from management about why they do not believe our proposal has merit. Meanwhile, there are spaces which routinely get dangerously hot, even when the outdoor temperature is not. Is the district really willing to allow students and staff to be in unsafe classrooms? Morale is at an all-time low among staff and students alike. In addition to protecting the health and safety of staff and students, this seems like an easy win for the district to gain a little bit more trust and improve morale just a bit. On the flip side, continuing to dismiss our concerns around this issue just pushes us deeper into the existing cycle of mistrust. Earlier tonight, we presented our concerns in a closed-door executive session of the school committee. Throughout the contract negotiations, we heard calls from the community for more openness and transparency, so that the public can see how the union and school committee try to resolve conflicts. To that end, we think this particular grievance presented a great opportunity for a public hearing. There are no personnel issues or anything else that would raise privacy concerns. And it's an issue that affects the entire community. We were profoundly disappointed that the school committee was unwilling to hold tonight's hearing in public. And we were also disappointed that the school committee was unwilling to hear from and learn from student witnesses about an issue that affects staff and students alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dorian Lam.
Sorry, I did not know how to do that. Hey, my name is Dorian Lam. And I'm actually a former materials fee kid. And so are my sisters. My mom was a BEP social worker and guidance counselor at Baker. And my father was a special ed teacher at Devo. My parents worked in Brookline for nearly 30 years. My father helped start the materials fee program in the 70s. My sisters and I worked as pairs in BEP and in the nine different elementary schools. Four years ago, I returned to Brookline after teaching in DC and Boston. I actually didn't want to leave teaching in Boston, but I needed to work part-time, so I came to BHS. And the reason why I am talking is because I want to show you my support of the material fees program. And I hear you tonight, and I am glad that we have the support. But I want to make sure that we continue to have that support and continue to make it possible for as many teachers as possible to get their students into the materials fee program. I also want to thank the school committee. Because my second year at BHS, the school committee helped convince the superintendent to let my daughter go to Brookline schools after she was diagnosed with an illness and needed to go to a school with a nurse. So, I thank you so much for your support. And I'm forever grateful that you helped me keep my job in Brookline by allowing my daughter to attend Brookline schools. When teachers were advocating on my behalf to do everything in their power for, power to keep me, I'm sorry. When teachers were advocating on my behalf to the school committee, the message was that I was valuable and the district needed to do everything in their power to keep me at BHS. See, I'm a special ed high school science teacher. And there are very, very, very few of us out there. So, we are hard to find. And so, they wanted to make sure that I stayed teaching my classes. Being a Brookline parent over the past three years has been a wonderful experience, and we have loved all of the teachers. They have been incredibly supportive to our daughter. And I want to make clear that as teachers, we also bring value to this community. And we are not easily replaceable, like I have heard many, many times. So, just as the school committee helped me three years ago, please advocate for me and all teachers again. Support this program in order to keep highly qualified, highly valuable expert teachers. You want Brookline to have the best schools, but the only way to have that is to have the best teachers. If we shrink or lose this program, valuable teachers will leave and the schools will suffer. Please help us keep this wonderful, sorry, wonderful program going for all teachers and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Nardi.
Okay. Hi, I go by Talma Nardi. I am an English teacher at BHS. I'm also here to talk about the materials fee program. It's a program that's close to my heart. I will try not to replicate what other people have said, which I also agree with. I wanted to share that I came to Brookline after 13 years as a teacher and a department chair, in part because this was a district where my children could attend. My child is, first child is currently a first grader at the Baker School. And he's extremely happy there. And I hope that as you make decisions about this program, you'll remember that many of us came to Brookline and have stayed here because this program exists. We've accepted positions here, turning down offers at other schools. And we've also made big life decisions, like choosing where to rent or where to buy a home based on the availability of these seats. I think it's a fantastic recruitment tool. I've recruited from my personal network, thanks to somebody who's speaking later. I've also recruited through I've also recruited through Bead, the Brookline educators for educator diversity. And two teachers who I recently recruited came here because of the materials fee program and now they're getting very nervous that their children are not going to be admitted. I hope we can just keep the transparency about how this program works open to the community and to all the educators who are considering it. I think that if people knew that kindergartners would be the only ones admitted during the first round, they might have made other choices about where to live or where to work or where to apply to schools. And I just reiterate what others said that I love working here. I want to keep recruiting amazing people to work with here and I really think this program is going to help us do that.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Honeywood.
Man, that really takes a second. Hi. I'm Honeywood and I'm the history teacher in the ACE program at the high school. I love my job largely because of the exemplary community of educators that I get to be a part of and because I have the support to implement my secondary Montessori training in a public school setting and reach some of our most marginalized students and transform disengaged and school-avoidant adolescents into young scholars hungry for an education. It is glorious. I'm also the mother of a four-and-a-half-year-old who will be completing his final Peapod year at his Montessori Children's House school next spring. And I am committed to finding a school that will offer him diverse, holistic, loving and quality education for his elementary school years. And I was really under the impression that that would be in Brookline. But the Peapod year in Montessori is kindergarten. So it seems like Tavi might be automatically denied a first-grade slot in the fall of 2023. For that to happen, not only would Brookline lose a brilliant, hilarious kiddo, I would be forced to expand my options and consider teaching at a Montessori school where he could get reduced tuition. To be clear, I am a queer, black Bostonian, a singer, a constitutional scholar, and an exemplary teacher. I am in my second year at BHS and I have already forged interdisciplinary collaborations. I've instituted new programs and I've pushed BHS to be a more equitable and just community founded in collaboration and hope. I am not going to have difficulty finding another teaching position should the need arise. But honestly, I love my colleagues and I love my program and I'd really rather not. Still, I think it's important that my child receives the best, most equitable and exciting education that he can. And if Brookline is not a district that values equity or that no longer protects the members of its community, even in this really small way, then why would either of us feel that we belonged here? The materials fee program is a tiny and very easy way to demonstrate to the families of Brookline educators and staff that the district cares about us and sees us as part of the community. It just doesn't make any logical, economic or systemic sense to dismantle a program that has such outsized benefits. I want to close by expressing my gratitude for the moves that the school committee, other speakers here and other members of the Brookline community have made to protect this program in the past and even tonight. It deeply matters to me as a new member of your community to feel welcome and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Crane.
Is that working?
It is, yes. Go right ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Liz Crane. For the past 20 years, I've been a Brookline High School biology teacher and have two kids currently attending Pierce as materials fee students. So you can probably guess why I'm here and I'm very grateful to hear about the administrative support being offered to materials fee as of this evening. First, I want to offer a personal comment. What an amazing feeling to have my own two kids experience the same high-quality education that I work so tirelessly to provide to my 100 students each and every day. I am so grateful for the materials fee program and it boosts my own morale and connections to PSB in profound and deep ways. And now a statement about PSB values. Any school district must start with its values, which must include, one, cultivating and strengthening true community between and among parents, students, elected and hired town officials and educators. Two, hiring and retaining exceptional and diverse educators. Then the district must create programs and policies that move the district closer to these defined values. Materials fee is a perfect example of such a program, especially with an unprecedented number of people leaving the field of education and simultaneously smaller pools of candidates than ever. To minimize, sorry, to maximize the impact of materials fee, we must offer spring placements to coincide with our own hiring season or at the very least transparent and consistent predictable timelines from year to year in respect to the materials fee. At this point, it feels like each year, teachers don't really know what to expect in terms of how it will roll out. To bring it back to my own teaching career and enrolling my own two daughters in the materials fee program, I made a 16-year teaching commitment to PSB. As we say at Brookline High School, we create the culture we want. The same is true on a district level. Over the course of the past dozen years, we have had periodic and always demoralizing conversations about the potential decay of the materials fee program. Let's end those conversations. Instead, let's work together to create, preserve and bolster the culture we want and need, one that attracts and retains the very best possible educators and cultivates community, trust and mutual respect between and among parents, town hall and educators. Materials fee is critical to this culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Scott Litzwack.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to speak a little bit. I am not a teacher, but I am a resident and a parent of a seventh and fifth grader at Pierce. And I also wanted to express my very strong support for the materials fees program and for all eligible applicants, not just those with kindergartners, to be accepted without delay. I believe that this is an extremely important program that shows how much we value that teachers and residents are an integrated community who are invested in and taking care of each other. Eliminating or in any way threatening or minimizing this program, which includes delaying acceptance of eligible applicants, is extremely detrimental to our goals of recruiting a high-quality and diverse faculty and sends a message that it is not important to the town of Brookline and its residents how invested our staff are in our school district and our town. I would like to ask Dr. Gillyery to provide clear and unequivocal support for the materials fees program and elimination of any delays of acceptance to this program so that our current staff can feel secure in their position and our investment of them and that our recruitment efforts are in no way inhibited at a critical time of year in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Agron Silva.
Hi, I'm Rachel Agron Silva. I'm also a Pierce parent. And I've also heard about the concerns about, you know, potential weaning support for this materials fees program. And the 18 students still waiting to hear not where they will get a spot, but if they will get a spot. And as a member of the community, I really strongly support keeping these children as part of our community. Their parents are professionals dedicating their careers to serving Brookline. And these children really should be offered a seat in a classroom, no matter what. Just like if a child moves to Brookline and they are guaranteed a seat in a classroom, so should these children. I agree by June so that their, their professional parents can plan. And the most importantly, to send the message that these children and these families, they're part of our community and they should always be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Hannigan.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. I'm making a comment regarding the Level 3 grievance concerning hot temperatures in the classroom. So today I speak on behalf of my coworkers and the thousands of students who need to enter these buildings each day to work. These are our working conditions and, and there are a few key issues to keep in mind. For many students and teachers, the months of September and June are unbearable because of the high temperatures in their classrooms. This hot time can be up to 20% of the school year. That's 20% of the time where kids are not able to learn effectively and teachers are not able to teach effectively. It's particularly hard given that these two are the two of the most important yet challenging times of the school year. In September, teachers and students alike are trying to feel out their new community. They are learning names. They are wrapping their heads around new content. They are adjusting into school. And in June, they are trying to end on a successful note and complete their last assignment effectively. Having to do this important work in oppressive heat makes the building and maintaining a community almost an impossible task. Hot temperatures in rooms is a basic health and safety issue that has become a kick-the-can situation for well over a decade. And we all know that climate change has amplified the problem during that time and will only continue to make it worse. This body, along with the superintendent, needs to begin a process of creating equity in our classroom learning environments. They need to point out to town officials that it's time for a town-wide commitment, a pledge to fully fund the necessary updates to make our school buildings conducive to learning rather than obstacles to learning. And what does this look like? Let's begin by asking teachers to identify the rooms that are problematic because we are living in those spaces. We can ask students that too. Let's begin the process now by declaring a heat index temperature that is a max for classrooms across the board. There are many parents who are qualified to help determine what that number should be. Let's make that commitment to our families, students, and say that this is the number where we know learning cannot just not happen. This commitment will also keep the towns focused on this very important issue. Brookline is supposed to focus on equity. There are vast inequalities being created when some rooms in the system can reach a real field of 90 or more degrees while others are comfortably climate-controlled. Did this body meet in spaces where it's not air-conditioned? We really need to work on this together and I think we can do it. We need real collaboration between the school committee, the town and the schools. Please reach out and start making a plan and begin it with the trigger temperature for classrooms to keep it safe. And parents, if your child is experiencing distress because of temperatures, please let the school committee and the town know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Jeanne Kane.
Good evening. Jeanne Kane, I'm a resident of Lincoln Road, parent of Pierce School and Brookline High kids. Dr. Gillyery, School Committee, I'm speaking this evening in support of the Brookline Public Schools Material Fee Program. This program is not just a nice perk. This program creates community. Teachers are integral to our community. Having their children in our classrooms is an extension of that community and the material fee program enrichens the school experience for all. As a lifelong resident of Brookline, I am familiar with the regular movements of people through this town. Each year, we say goodbye to a neighbor, but we also welcome a new friend to our community. By the time my daughters reached third grade, they were also familiar with this movement of people. Each year, however, they've returned to classrooms with friends because their parents participate in the material fee program. These kids have built consistency in their community. Parents of children in the material fee program are volunteering to assist in after-school activities. They're jumping in on their turns for carpool. They're often the first RSVP to a birthday party. The fact that they have a home address with a different zip code, it's unknown to our children and perhaps to their children too. Before thinking short-term about how eliminating or reducing this program would meet financial challenges of an upcoming academic year, think about classrooms without the children of the material fee program. How does that position our town to retain first-class educators? How does this set up a pipeline for recruiting talent? How does that preserve a vibrant school community? And how will new fire, new hires feel when they realize that they are not extended an invitation to join our community fully? And when Brookline DPW has schools ready to open, but the nearby cities and towns are forced to close to snow, think about the teachers that will not be able to report to work because their children's school is just not open. I strongly encourage you to think and support the continuation of this material fee program. Attract teachers like Marcy Miller, like Dorian Lamb, Tal Nardi, Laura Honeywood, Liz Crane and so many, many more and invite their children to come to our classrooms and to be part of our Brookline school experience and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Faith Dantowitz.
Hi, and thank you, School Committee, for letting me speak. On behalf of Linda and myself, we want to say thank you to Casey. You will truly be missed. Thank you for all you managed through the pandemic, through, for all you juggled daily and just for everything. And thank you Regina for all you have done for our early childhood program. We appreciate you. Thank you, School Committee. I already said that for letting me speak. I'm Faith Dantowitz, interim co-chair of CPAC. In recent days, I received many alarmed emails regarding the hiring process for the deputy superintendent of student services. After conferring with Taysha Fluker, we decided I should represent the hiring team and make a statement to clarify. Very quickly, after Casey resigned, Casey's resignation, PSB initiated a nationwide search for a permanent replacement. We were fortunate to get a good pool of interested and qualified candidates. A team of educators, administrators and parents, of which I was one, reviewed the submitted resumes and did first-round interviews of the candidates. We are now in the process of bringing those candidates back for a second round with senior administration, school committee rep, a school committee rep and ultimately with Dr. Gillyery. Dr. Gillyery will present school committee with his recommended candidate and school committee makes the final hiring decision. If this search doesn't produce a candidate that is acceptable to school committee, the fallback plan is to identify an interim deputy superintendent. There is no scenario that allows for someone to be placed in this position without review by multiple constituencies and approval of school committee. I hope this clarifies the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comments. Next up, presentations and discussions of current issues. Brookline High School Social Studies update with High School Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator Gary Schiffman.
Thank you, David. I'm Gary Schiffman. I am indeed the Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator at the high school. And I am going to present to you on the department. I'm going to share my agenda with you. Let me tell you first, some of you know, because I've been here before. I've been in my position since 2006. I served until the 2019, 2020 school year, then took a leave of absence one year and now I'm back this year. Okay, now I'm going to share my screen. Voila. So that's the, that's the agenda. I'm going to give you an overview of the department, let you know what let you know what we do, why we do it, and how we do it. Then I want to talk about the topic of leveling. We are underway with a, with a transformation of our department in terms of how we group students in our classes. I want to tell you about that. And then I have a section where I'm going to tell you about some of our initiatives and aspirations, things we're going to work on beyond leveling. And then I will be delighted to present my last slide, which is this year's 2022 Curtain Prize winners. I'll tell you about that contest when we get there, but it is, all right. So our purpose, our purpose is to equip all students in social studies at the high school. Our purpose is to equip all students with broad knowledge about human affairs and the human world, past and present, and to equip those students with the skills necessary to make sense of that world and to take ownership of it as just thoughtful and responsible citizens. So how do we do that? We do that by offering them courses. There was a three-year social studies requirement at Brookline High School. So all ninth graders, virtually all ninth graders will take ninth grade WISP, World History Identity Status and Power. That is an unleveled course. All students take that course. In 10th grade, students take one of two courses, 10th grade Modern World History Standard, 10th grade Modern World History Honors. I'll return to that topic under the heading of leveling because we're going to make some changes there. And then currently, our array of required courses in US history, and this is the one the state requires, you cannot get a diploma in the state of Massachusetts without completing a year of study of the United States history. We fulfill that requirement by offering students US History Standard, American Studies, which is a clustered course. Students enroll at the same time in a social studies class, American Studies, and an English class with the same title, and they are cohorted. So they're in the same English and social studies class with the same students. That's offered at either level. We have a traditional US History Honors class and an 11th grade AP US History class. Once you're done with our required courses, or in some cases, before you're done, but in addition to those courses, we offer these courses. The ones at the top are full year courses reserved for seniors. I'll read those, psychology, mixed level. Students are all in the same room. They can take the course for standard honors. Same is true with legal studies. Marcy Miller, teachers, you just heard from her. African American Studies, mixed level class, AP US Government, AP Human Geography, Jen Hennigan, you just heard from, she teaches that. Climate Science and Social Change is a new course. You're going to hear from Roger Grandy after I'm done. He teaches that with a science teacher. We then have a course open to juniors and seniors called Social Justice Leadership Workshop. We have a course open to sophomores, juniors, and seniors, also taught by Roger Grandy, called Global Leadership. We have a course invented by social studies teachers that is now migrated. It is staffed by, this year has been staffed by two special educators. Next year, I believe it's an English teacher and a special educator. That course is called Racial Awareness. It's a wonderful course. If you have questions, please ask me about that. That's open for sophomores only. They take that in addition to their Modern World History required course. And then we have one-term senior electives. We offer Asian American Studies in the fall, mixed level class, Philosophy in the Spring, and Economics both semesters. So that's how we introduce students to knowledge and skills pertaining to the human world. So now a little trip down memory lane. I'm going to talk about WISP, which is the first item on this slide. And I'm actually going to stop sharing so I can just talk to you for a minute. So I am a WISP teacher. And in addition to being the Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator, WISP is a replacement of a course we used to offer, which was a ninth grade pre-modern World History course level in the way our 10th grade course is currently. You could take that class for standard or honors credit. And in, I guess, conversations began in earnest about reforming that course in 2016, 2017. Had conversations with a lot of people who taught our existing ninth grade course at the time, and with eighth grade teachers with whom we met frequently, talked a lot to my colleague, my administrative colleague, Jeff Tegnell, who had the position that Greg Porter now has, as supervisor at the K curriculum in social studies. And for a variety of reasons, we had serious questions about whether leveling, as we did, made good sense for our students. Let me talk about some of the minor concerns. Eighth grade teachers, there are eighth grade teachers at each of the eight elementary schools, and they meet sometimes, but not a lot. And the reality is that their parent communities are quite different. Their student communities are quite different. And what we noticed at the high school, and what was verified by the cohort of eighth grade teachers and guidance counselors, recommendations for our levels, and I can only speak to ninth grade social studies, though I can imagine this is true elsewhere, they were all over the map. There were teachers who recommended about 50% of their students for honors, 50% of students for standard. There were other breakdowns. And then there were some schools that would send us students unrecommended, and we would sort it out. And so that was, simply as an administrative fact, that was not really a sustainable model. It created a great deal of anxiety on the part of teachers who felt that the responsibility to label students for the first time and predict their performance in the high school was either beyond their job description, or inevitably rely upon dollars they didn't think they had. And to get to more substantive concern, we were replicating hierarchies in our classes through our leveling. So if you were a student in public housing, if you were a student of color, if you were a boy, if you were on an ed plan, there are a whole bunch of things that would predict your arrival in a standard class. And we weren't comfortable walking as, I wasn't comfortable as a teacher, as a supervisor of those classes, walking from classroom to classroom, thinking, I can walk in and look at the students and guess what class this is. That's not, we know that that's not our aspiration. It should be impossible to know. But it was quite possible to know. And so in 2017, 2018, we started to really collect data. We got enormous support from the district to collect data, demographic data on who took our classes, at what level, and most important, how that played out over time. And so I'll just share, Robin, Erin Cooley came and did a wonderful meeting with us and presented data that she helped collect, well, she collected and then presented to us based on questions we had about the demographics or our levels. And as an example of what we found, if you were a 10th grade black boy recommended for ninth grade standard, the odds were overwhelming that you would never leave the standard level. And I just wasn't convinced from talking to many students, including black boys in ninth grade standard classes, that that was because they could not achieve at the level of our honors classes. I believe, and our teachers of ninth grade and other levels, came to believe there are a whole bunch of factors that influence how students choose levels or assign levels. And many of those factors have nothing to do with academic ability or aptitude. I could tell you stories. Ask me questions in the Q and A, and I'll tell you some stories about a couple of kids that I actually took on, that we did a kind of study thing, because I was very curious about how they performed in class and why. And I can tell you lots of other things besides academic ability or, or investment had to do with how they were placed. So we decided in 2018, 19, to design a new course. And at this point, I was talking to members of the school committee and had the support of central administration, school administration. And so we prepared, we had a year of support to prepare a new curriculum based on the premise that all students in Brookline High School would come to the high school. And in social studies, they would learn about the human world, that, you know, how societies work, how we all get along, how we make decisions, how we're affected by things, and how we affect things. We decided we could put all the students together in Brookline and have them discuss those topics together. And we unveiled our plan in the spring at the eighth grade parent night in 2019. And we said, your kids, when they come to the high school, they're taking social studies, plain old social studies. We described the course we imagined. It's called World History Identity Status and Power. And I have to say, the response from the parent community, I was afraid, I'll be quite frank, I was afraid that parents, some parents would feel we were taking something away from their students. And I get it, we read a lot in the process. The two years I just mentioned, we spent a lot of time as a group during the school year and over the summers, reading about leveling. We read the research, we read data, we looked at the data in our district, but we looked at data elsewhere. We talked to people who worked in such programs, and we visited many, many schools that had embarked on the experiment we were about to embark. And so I anticipated fear, and I anticipated opposition. And I want to tell you that I have, to the, to date, received no complaints from parents, not one, about our decision. Not before, not during, and we're not after yet. But I have not received any complaints about the fact that we've chosen to put all students together in eighth grade, which is great. I also want to give a shout out to guys named my current member, who got on Facebook after that eighth grade parent night, who explained why we were doing this, and why it was important to us. Why was Central Tower core mission? He wrote a lovely thing, better than the little speech I made. And the response to him was entirely positive. So that was great. And encouragement, I think, for others who might be considering the same experiment. So in 2019, 2020, we began teaching the course. We, we didn't sort the students of Brookline. We asked them all to come and learn about the human world with us, indifferent to whatever they were recommended for, for whatever other classes they took. And I became a WISP teacher. I started teaching that course as well. I taught my one section there. And you may remember, now we're getting into recent history, 1919, 1920 is a year that will live in infamy, because in March of that year, March 13th, to be exact, we shut school down. And so I never got to complete that year of my WISP class, not really. I met on Zoom with the three or four kids who showed up in pandemic, and I wrote to them all the time and to make videos for them. But the reality was, school was not in session. And so I never, I, I just discovered what the fourth quarter of that course is like, because last year I was on leave. Anyway, this is now the third year of WISP. I want to give you some preliminary reports on how it's going. And then I want to tell you about how we're studying it. And then I will segue to the 10th grade course that we have on the block for next year. So first of all, as a matter of structure, as a matter of community building, I'm going to, even before all the data is, and I'm willing to tell you as a classroom teacher with a fair amount of experience, who works on a team with teachers who range from very new to enormous amounts of experience, it works socially and in terms of putting kids in the room and getting the effect you want. The effect you want is that we're here to learn, and we're here to learn together. That's it. It's really pretty simple. That we have achieved. So one of the telltale moments of that was when Gabe and Erin came to sit with us to talk about how we were going to study the course, because we always had always intended to do that. What have we actually done? We talked about a lot of things about the assignments, the writing, and how we know about academic growth and compared to other courses and blah, blah, blah. And we went around and we had this moment about, what are we not talking about? What we're not talking about is student behavior. We're not talking about buy-in in the classroom. We're not talking about whether we can get students to be on task. And I will tell you, I've taught, I've taught everything. I've taught ninth grade standard, I taught ninth grade honors, I taught honors and standard, everything. The only course I haven't taught is AP, actually. And in ninth grade standard, I troubled, I struggled with behavior. And we all had, because there was a community ethos that was not always positive. What we had done, in essence, is taken a third of the students, and those are the numbers, by the way, our standard honors courses roughly broke down to 70% honors, which was a code for heterogeneous, and 30% standard, which was a code for remedial. And whether or not the students were remedial or not, there became a kind of self identification, and the cohort took that on. And misbehavior could get positive attention in that cohort. And teachers, of course, fight against it, and it's not uniform. I've had standard classes that are absolutely delightful without behavior problems, but it was mixed, and I never knew. In WISP, of all the sections, there were 25 that first year, I think there are 24 this year. We do not have any classrooms in which the norm is fooling around, just gives you positive attention. And remember, you know, they're 14-year-olds. I mean, look, I fooled around when I was 14. I get the incentive. But we are able in every one of our classrooms to not worry about behavior and worry about how do we get kids to learn. And so we're now into the, to the point where I believe, I want to declare success in the grouping model. We have a ton of work to do. Gabe and Erin are helping us. The work for me, as far as I'm concerned, is about the curriculum and assessment, about the pedagogy. It's about making the experience rich and engaging for students at every level. We already went in for a year preparation with documents at various reading levels, and lots of scaffolds, and lots of conceptions about how project-based learning, in particular, would allow students to access the curriculum in a variety of ways. So we had a lot of ideas, but now we have experience, and we need harder data, harder comparative data, so we can actually, you know, the kids are like, yeah, it's too easy for me. We can push them. And the kids, for whom it's still really hard for me, we can bring them in further in. But the reality is, the social question in my mind is more or less settled. And now we're working on the technique of pushing each kid hard, so they come out thinking, I actually learned something about the human world, you know, at least how, at least how it used to be. But the reality is, the connection between the world we're studying and the world we're living in. So that's where we are. I will be back probably in a year or so to give you the update on what we've studied about WISP, what we've learned about it. I'll just tell you the two forms of data we're collecting right now. One is, we've been doing a series of observations. I actually invited the superintendent to come and watch. He correctly said, I'm not holding a clipboard in my hand when I walk in these rooms. Teachers are going to freak out. So we're not going to do that. But we went and observed, and he got to see what, what we're doing in our, in our observational experimental data collection, which is that I go to non-social studies classes that are leveled, and I take notes on student comportment and behavior. And other chairs and other administrators go to other, go to WISP classes and others. And we're just going to compare what we see and see if we see what the WISP teachers themselves have reported, validate that. We also, John Andrews, the Chair of the English Department wisely said, let me survey all the ninth grade English teachers. English still has the kind of 70-30 honors standard model in ninth grade. John's very interested in looking at that. He said, let me ask my ninth grade teachers, who are all teaching WISP students, right, that are the same kids, let me ask them to ask their students in their honors and standard classes, what is your experiences like socially, academically, in all those ways, relationship with the teacher? And we're getting that. We actually have that feedback. And Robin again has, Erin, I'm sorry, I just called you Robin. Robin Coyne let me in, and so now I feel grateful. Erin has agreed to look at the, look at that data and help us to understand it. And then we'll present that back to both teams, English and social studies, and we'll have more experiments. We'll collect more data. In the meantime, the screen back. In the meantime, why am I like that? All right. I'm sharing my calendar with you. Hold on. That's so can I stop that? Sure. Sorry. You know what? Oh, there it is. Sorry. When you don't minimize the screen, it hides. So the 70-30 problem. We knew, so one of the things that's going on with leveling is you are creating a community. I will tell, tell you all something that is not nearly surprising, that all human beings function in part by looking at the people like them, around them, their peer group, their cohort group, and they take cues of that behavior from that group. When you are a teenager, let's say from seventh through 11th grade, wow, is that acute. And so it's very powerful. And so that cohort effect, I think, is why we see positive effects in WISP, why we sometimes saw negative effects in our standard classes. And the 70-30 thing in particular does have the effect of having of, it incentivizes some kids to be in honors classes because it's where their friends are, and it's why those classes are, academically speaking, heterogeneous. And it encourages some kids to actually push the other way and say, I don't want to be with those kids, I want to be with other kids. There's actually a class and racial dimension to that, there's even a gender dimension to that. But the bottom line is, the 70-30 thing is a problem. And we knew when we de-leveled WISP, that we would then simply have a 10th grade course that had 70-30, a heterogeneous honors, and a remedial standard. And we weren't satisfied with that, but you know, we're doing what we can as we can. And in the middle of all that, there was a pandemic. So this is what we've got now. I already showed you these courses. Ninth grade WISP, two versions of 10th grade, and a bunch of choices in 11th grade. 11th grade for now is fine. We have plans for that, but that's not super urgent. 10th grade is super urgent. And so I want to show you this. Next year, we launch a pilot. We're going to run four sections of a new course called Global Studies. And that is going to be a mixed level course, and it's going to work in a way that's somewhat different from our other mixed level courses. In senior year, or even in American Studies, students sign up for standard honors, but they're in the same course, which is great, by the way, that works. But in Global Studies, what we decided is, students who have the WISP experience, we want to recruit them to a new course. And the course will have various novel features in terms of curriculum. It will do case studies rather than a traditional chronological approach. So each quarter will have a theme, and within each theme, we'll do various case studies. Of course, we'll attend to chronology. You can't understand how things happen unless you understand when they happen in the sequence. But you can study development in a variety of contexts without starting at the French Revolution and ending at the Cold War. So you can study revolutions in the same way. So we'll do case studies. But the most important thing we'll do is put all, try to get all kids together, try to get a heterogeneous group of kids together. And the novelty here is, we will not have any levels until the end of first quarter. At the end of first quarter, based on performance and feedback, students will choose, do you want to continue with this course, enrolled for regular credit or standard credit, or would you like to attempt the honors credit? And that will give teachers in the class an attempt, attempt to assess the performance of students, give feedback to students, and allow students to think about the decision, not as social grouping. and allow students to think about the decision not as social grouping at all. I mean, they will to some extent, but the, the priority will not be on the labeling, but on the actual work they have experienced, having done both all the assignments, which everyone does, and the honors extension assignments. They'll get to try that and say, do, do I want to aspire to this? Does it fit my world? Does it fit my interests? Does it fit my schedule? And so we're hoping by delaying that system will allow students to make a more authentic choice about the level of challenge they hope for. And they'll all be in the same room, whatever they choose. So the new configuration gives you a 10th grade that looks like it will be a slightly smaller 10th grade standard, it'll be a slightly smaller 10th grade honors. There'll be four sections in the middle. We've capped it at four sections because that's teacher capacity. I have two teachers who will pilot this course. And they have been working steadily this spring. Thank you to Leslie for, and Gabe for supporting us in the planning of that. Thank you to Anthony for supporting those teachers with a plus-one release to work on the course during the school year. Once that pilot year is done, we want to open that up. And I would like that to become our biggest offering in 10th grade. I would like that to be the big normal middle course. I still have concerns about a lingering 10th grade standard course, so you don't see it here. But in my mind and in our conversations, we're talking about whether in fact we can have a department in which there is something like an honors course, maybe that honors course is called the AP World History. Maybe it's called something else, maybe it is something else. And all other students, that is the vast majority of students, will either enroll in a traditional narrative history, modern world history class, maybe mixed-level standard honors and global studies, which as I said, I hope will be our biggest class in 10th grade. Level designation will become harder to tell by the complexion of the students. 11th grade, we have a lot of things going on. It's actually so confusing even to me that I don't think we have any pernicious effects around it. We have some perhaps pernicious effects of identification, but we've got a lot of different options for kids. And the reality is in my mind, this is just debatable and we are debating this at the high school. In my mind, students are starting to specialize. They're starting to say, you know what, I'm a STEM kid. Or you know what, I'm an art kid. Or you know what, I love English or whatever it is. I mean, they will go to college shortly after their junior year and they will declare major. In any case, our US history offerings reflect that there are a variety of ways to learn US history. And there are a variety of levels of interest and commitment to that subject as opposed to other subjects. And so that's why we offer these, all these ways of doing US history. I would be pleased if down the road, we had AP US history and then two mixed-level classes that the vast majority of students took. Like traditional narrative history, US history, standard and honors. And the American Studies class, which is mixed-level clustered with English, which by the way is a wonderful course. It deepens the literature, it deepens the history and it connects students to both. It asks them to tell their stories alongside the stories they learn in literature and history. So ideally, that would be the biggest course in our 11th grade. What you're not hearing is a proposal to de-level all social studies classes. That is a logical option for a variety of reasons. I am reluctant to commit to that, actually don't think it's a good idea. But I understand there are arguments to the contrary and I think evidence should determine the outcome. For now, this is what we're doing. And the conversation is open. We have an unlevel ninth grade course, we will have a global studies mixed-level course. I hope that will grow, I plan for that to grow. And I plan a reconfiguration of those two grades, 10th and 11th, so that most students learn together. And the center of gravity is this is a community of learners and that's just what we're doing and everyone belongs. So that's the leveling. That's what I want to say to you about leveling again, questions when I'm done. We have lots of other things we're doing. Pandemic has slowed us down. Contract negotiations slowed us down. Lot of things slowed us down. But we are ready, I feel ready to recommit and to say, let's, let's, let's be clear about what we're doing and let's recommit ourselves to doing it well. The leveling project is underway, we've got lots of other things cooking. I did a survey of teachers in my department about a month ago and I said, let's make our agenda. We want to get out early in September. You know what I'm interested in, you know what the leveling project is, but what else are we doing? And the very first thing they said, the top vote getter was a combination of, let us be very clear on what our mission is in social studies. You may have noticed from reading the news, it's a fraught subject. There is no simple history to teach anymore. And let us take the equity agenda seriously in our field. Are we telling the right stories to reflect both the current realities and the aspirational realities of our students, of all of our students? And let's put those things together and really revisit our vision and our mission. And that's what people want to do. And I was very gratified to hear that. So we're gonna start the year with a visioning process. That will be a formal process. And it'll be an attempt to incorporate things we've done in a kind of ad hoc way. Scrambling to keep up with current events, scrambling to come up, scrambling to come to grips with a politically polarized and a a racially hierarchical and conflictual society, but one that still has at its base, I believe, a deep aspiration to be an egalitarian society. That has to show up in the way we teach our classes. We're gonna revisit all of it. We are, this was the brainchild of Leslie and Keith Lozama, MECO director, to do an equity audit in our department. It fits perfectly with our intent to review our mission and our vision. And Leslie and Keith have commissioned a firm to come and do it. Look at the curriculum and they will inevitably look at the faculty and the, and the classes and pedagogy. Give us feedback on what we're doing. There's nothing like an outside eye with a focus to say, you know, whatever you say, here's what, here's what you're doing. Now take this information and do something with it. So that will happen in the fall and we're looking forward to that. That's also gonna happen at the K level. But I look forward to results of that audit and that will feed right into our vision and mission work. We've also been told by the state, it's state law, that we must report at the high school on civic action projects. And we will comply with that, of course. Again, pandemic has slowed us down. We have classes, for the time being, I've asked 11th grade teachers to attend to that state requirement. And to some extent, they have, we've done civic action projects because of research topics, we write letters and stuff like that. But that deserves a fuller treatment, we need to make real projects. I have ideas about where that might live. Like 11th grade was a stopgap. I actually think it belongs to, it deserves to live in a variety of places. We need to figure out how to keep track of it because we do have to report it to the state. But just had a very productive meeting with my counterpart in the K. We're gonna talk more about that at both, in both our worlds. But we're gonna work on figuring out what the civic action project will be and where it will live. Marcy's already told me about the Civil Rights Tour, that's wonderful. That will integrate very well with our US history curriculum. Not everyone will go, but everyone can learn from it. And over time, lots of teachers can go as well, which enormously enriches our curriculum and our teaching. And I will say this finally about our aspirations. One of the hallmarks of Brookline education has been diversity. You saw, we have so many different courses. We have so, so many different ways of teaching, we have so many different pedagogical practices, all wonderful. But the reality is there has to be a core. So the bookend to the vision and mission were agreeing on what it is we're actually doing and in broad terms, how it should be done. I believe we need a little bit more in common in the classroom on a daily level. Right now, what really in my mind holds the department together has common practice is the research paper. The research paper is required at every grading level in all of our required classes. And we just ended research season, it's been wonderful. I'm gonna show you the curtain winners in a minute. These are the kids who wrote the best research papers this year. But that, that's a lot because what it means is research paper is such an enormous undertaking for young people that you have to be teaching it from the beginning of the year. And so even though in your US history class, you learn more of this and less of that, and in mine, I learn more of this and less of that, that's, that's fine. Everybody's preparing to write the research paper. And therefore, everyone's getting the skills necessary to do it. You know, how do I read and take notes? How do I find good sources? How do I turn that stuff into thinking? How do I turn my thinking into an outline, my outline into paper and all that stuff? So there's a lot of scaffolding, a lot of process that makes those courses common. I, I would like to embark, once the vision and mission are subject to agreement. I think the core going forward is we need to identify, de facto, we have half of it. We need to identify fully the documents every student at every grading level simply must read and understand to be competent at the skills that a just thoughtful and responsible citizen has. And so I'm, I'm going to ask teachers in the department to identify those documents and a pedagogy that will make us know that students have not only understood what they say, but what the authors intended when they said it. And I think that gives us yet another opportunity to be on the research paper to adopt common practice. And in this case, text that, you know, any kid from Brookline High School graduation, this will be the test. But in a couple of years, I want you to go up to the kids' graduation and I say, I want you to tell me that, that text, you know, you read Frederick Douglass's speech, tell me about it. And they better be able to do it, otherwise we'll just grab that diploma right from their hands. So, or maybe we'll catch them before that, I don't know. I, before I show you the, so this, this is the lead into the research paper. I'll tell you about the results this year. I have to say something in light of the public comment. You, you know, and if it hasn't been said explicitly, there was some concern among teachers that the, the materials fee program might be curtailed and that was because acceptance is what I give to the students who were not entering kindergarten. And I just want to say as a hiring manager, one of my jobs is to hire the teachers who teach our children, my children, when here. I can't tell you how right they were. Teachers, as Marcy said, who believe they can bring their stu, their kids here are fully committed. They are committed because not only your kids, my kids, but their kids go here. It makes them part of a community. It makes them, the parents who spoke to you probably know teachers who said kids go to school with kids of teachers. It is so essential and as a hiring manager, when I say to kids, it's not true in every district, it doesn't work this way. But if I say to teachers who I'm trying to recruit, we have a program called materials fee, come work here, and by the way, your kids can come too. I can't tell you how many times I've sealed a deal like that. It's very, and teachers I offer jobs to very often, most of the time, I would say, have an offer somewhere else. It's really powerful leverage. Okay. So if you see these kids are at, or the teachers, why, I've given you a shorthand, BG is bear a gall. These are the kids who won the contest. The way it works is this, everybody in the department has, every kid taking a required class has to write a research essay. This is what we require of them. We then ask each teacher to nominate the best essays they have received. I strip all the names off, the student name, the teacher name, and I group them by grade and level, the level of 1th grade. And I send them off to a team of teachers who have been tasked with reading all the essays. They use our curtain rubric and they say, which one's the best? And so it's all blind, it's really good grading. And then I go away as, as I have in the last two days. And I go to classes, I interrupt them and I announce, as I did for example for Sophia, I went to her class this morning and I said, I'm Mr. Schiffman, blah, blah, blah. And I gave them the history. John Curtin in the 1920s donated money to establish a fund. And the fund was designed to reward students who showed an unusual interest in civic affairs. I believe that's what the fund says, unusual interest. We have converted that fund in the last 15 years or so. We have tied that fund to our research essays, which we believes, we believe fully honors the spirit and the letter of the quest. And we give kids substantial cash prizes for having won the curtain prize. Kids all know about it, they talk about it. They talk to each other about it. And it's not just like kids like to win money, everybody does. Everybody loves recognition and partly what we're recognizing is, as I tell them, how difficult this process is, it's the hardest thing by far we ask students to do. How important we think it is and therefore how worthy of recognition it is. And so I will tell you, there are two looks on kids' face, even with the masks, I can tell. There are two looks on kids' faces when I make the speech about John Curtin and why this is so important and how hard it will work. And the 2022 winner is Sophia Sue. And there are two possible reactions, one is the smile that burst through the mask. And Sophia gave that, there's always a little handshake as I hand them the envelope. And the other one is the look of utter shock, like, what? And I think that one's my favorite. So I got two of those that I should have photographed. But I will tell you that all of these students were thrilled to win the award. And I will also tell you that there are students, last point about leveling. There are students in 10th grade standard class and 11th grade standard class who have not won academic awards before and may not come to our awards night, who worked really hard and wrote really good papers. And when I hand them the envelope with the invitation to our celebration, Monday at 6:30. And when I give them the W9 so they can become a vendor and get a check, they are, it's transformative. So thanks to John Curtin. How the fund survived the 20s and then the Great Depression and left us the money, I don't know. But if they were still around, I would ask him for investment advice. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So who would like to go first? Helen, go ahead.
You know, I don't have to go first, I keep on buying, I'm first, put up my.
Her best with the button, Helen, you've had the most.
I'm fast, I'm fast, right? And I'm afraid somebody else will get my question, so I can't, you know, get it out there. So I have three questions. First of all, thank you, thank you for all your hard work and for the whole department's hard work on this. Because this isn't just you, but it's everybody and I, we, we really appreciate it. I mean, part of this we've heard is on the curriculum subcommittee already. And it's nice to get some sort of feedback on how it's going. So one thing, and you probably don't have it now, but I would be very curious to look at the longitudinal dan, data in terms of how many kids who, over the three years or five years, depending on what you want to use, go from what would have been standard to honors. How many take that leap? If you can figure that out, well, I guess you can, because you have 10th grade unleveled and you have 11th grade leveled. And, or 9th grade unleveled rather, and 10th grade leveled. So it'd be simple to sort of track and see and, and maybe see that with demographics. I think that would be important. So that, that was one request. I was curious, this reporting to the state about civic action projects, I don't remember hearing about that. Can you? I mean, Big Brother's looking over us or what is this? I'm sorry, editorializing, but.
Right, give us, give me all three and then I'll, I'm gonna form that one out though.
I actually think, no, it was only two. I was a little bit, and they, the, the ceremony, oh, where's the ceremony on Monday?
Oh, MLK Room 630, please come, it is so wonderful.
If we, if I can.
Parents come, the grandparents come, the teachers all come and give speeches for the kids. So we have a, it's a very nice, very large awards assembly every year in the Robertson Dubs Auditorium and it goes on for some time. I have my standard joke, social studies near the end, I say, congratulations, you've made it to the halfway point.
But.
This is the opposite, it is seven or eight, it's eight students, teachers talk about them, they describe their class, their paper. And I wish every kid could have that moment, but these kids get to have the moment and they get to have it based on something they did. You know, and it's just, please come, it's wonderful.
It might be an idea to get Big to tape it, if they would.
Ask Big Brother, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
About the longitudinal data and then Erin, I'm gonna hand it off to you because you actually compiled the data. Part of the study we did before WISP was, it was the longitudinal data that allowed us to see that the cohorting effect was so strong. I knew some kids in the data and I knew they could have done honors and they never did. We could see, but the limitation of that data was, I think it was one or maybe two cohorts. So you watch kids come in and you follow them. It'd be great to have multiple cohorts because things do change a lot. And we'll also say that the problem with data collection right now is, you may have noticed, the last two years have been somewhat unusual.
Yeah.
Hard to figure out what the baseline is now. And this is not social studies, kids are different. I mean, students are different and they're different in different ways. Some kids are amazingly relatively unaffected by all the stuff that's gone on. And some adults are like that too, two or three of them. But some kids, the impact of the pandemic, the time out of school, the masks, the whole thing. I mean, the, the simplest observation, I have seventh graders in my class. They're as old as ninth graders, but they are definitely seventh graders. Beha, and not, and it's not bad behavior, it's seventh grade behavior. And so that's the tip of the iceberg. Anyhow, Robin, would you talk about what, what the, what the longitudinal?
Erin.
I do it again. I'm gonna call you Cooley, Cooley, which, this Cooley, would you tell, talk about the longitudinal data and what we could do and, and then the reporting requirement?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, when we met with Gary and his team, Gabe and I, a couple of months ago, I'm thinking about evaluating the WISP course, we talked a lot about a plethora of data that we could collect. You know, including some of the things he already, already mentioned. And so we're thinking about those things, but we did talk about this year kind of being that baseline year because it is sort of the first full year of, real full year, I guess, of, of the course in person. And, you know, after the pandemic. And what we won't be able to do though, Helen, is because kids are coming. after the pandemic. Um, what we won't be able to do though, Helen, is, um, because kids are coming in and it's de-leveled, we couldn't necessarily say, um, you know, of kids that would have been in standard, right? Because they don't actually get any sort of recommendation, they just come into the class. Uh, but we can see where these ninth graders this year, where they go in 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, and we can even look at where they're going in other courses, right outside of social studies as well.
And you can compare it to, um, previous years, kids going from ninth to 10th grade, and seeing how many of them go to honors versus standard. I mean, you know.
Yeah, right. We just need to, um, again, keep in mind what has occurred the last couple of years.
Yeah, I'm not, I agree, I agree with you. I don't think you should use the data from the last couple of years. I think, you know, starting now, and look, you know, sort of following them through and sync, because it may not even happen in, in 10th grade, it may happen in 11th grade or 12th grade. You know, kids develop at a different pace. So, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but, but I think that it would be great to know that information if you can.
Yeah, we've talked about those things, and actually, one of the great things about this project too, is that the, you know, I've, we've already met with the teachers a handful of times. And they are super, super engaged, um, in this, and really helpful in thinking about what is the right information to collect and the right, um, data to study.
Great.
Um, and then in terms of the civics project requirement, um, so I believe in somewhere around 2018, the governor signed into law that, um, each public school, students in eighth grade and in high school have to have one or no less than one student-led civics project. So we just essentially have to, um, tell the state yes or no, as to whether or not kids engaged in a particular project in eighth grade, and then at any point during high school.
Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
All right. Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I've been, I've been sitting here trying to frame my words, um, for some time, actually, for most of the presentation. Did I hear correctly that people are referring to standard classes? I'm fairly certain I heard this correctly, as remedial, are we? I'm fairly certain I heard you say that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would not attribute that to people. I said that.
I would ask us not to do that, because I, I, I am, I'm going to put forth that opinion, because that's exactly the reason that parents are putting pressure on their kids to take honors and higher classes, because there is a fear that standard, um, I'm sorry, standard classes are considered remedial, and I would put forth that I do not necessarily equate that, and I would be very concerned about what students would hear or, or think about themselves if they were to hear that adults considered that if they were in a standard class, that they would be considered a student who needed remediation. Especially if they were a student on an IEP, or I, I, I have, I take, I take issue with this. And I'm concerned about how students would see themselves, um, how parents would see their students, and I, I, I'm deeply concerned about this. And, and this is exactly why I think we should be leveling classes. But it's certainly not the language that I would want us to promote in, in promoting this idea. I, this is exactly my fear of why I can, I'm concerned, even especially even in Brookline, about the idea of leveling classes, and the, the fee, the, the pressure we put on kids, the pressure that parents put on themselves and put on kids, that the whole joy of learning and the, I, I have a lot of feelings, and I'm not even sure that we disagree in our goals of, 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 of why having multi-levels in a class is a, is a beneficial thing, but when I hear the words standard and remediation being put together, I take great umbrage, I think is the word. I can't even think straight. I have been sitting here with shaking. Um, I am so upset. So, I have actual questions that I want to ask, but I, I haven't been able to sit here. I am so upset. So I will ask my questions, but should my child hear that? I can't even right now. So here are my questions, and then I'm gonna shut off my camera. One, what is the actual level of the philosophy class? Two, when we consider WISP, how did this affect students with, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to take a break.
Jennifer, I, I'm, I'm assuming you're there. I hope you're listening. I apologize. That was me, that was me talking. I was not representing anyone else. I was representing, so I don't think we disagree about the substance. You called me to account for my use of a word that was hurtful and offensive. I apologize for that.
Suzanne, and I'm sorry, sorry if I'm going to, David, and please, please forgive me, I apologize, Suzanne, please forgive me for jumping ahead of you. I too take umbrage at, at, at the, at the, at the equating of, of standard and remedial. A. B, I don't know if you've spoken to middle school teachers at any time soon, but yes, they teach research projects, and they teach them to, to work in teams. And yes, they teach all of those things that you claim that the students have no, no, that, that they need to know, and that's part of that. B. C, do you have any idea how many, how many times the, this, the guidance counselors in the K-8 schools to our middle school, to our a, arising ninth graders or eighth graders are recommending that, no, you should not take all honors classes, because there will be way too much work. So, so I don't know that your level setting is, is, is of the same levels that our guidance counselors in our K-8 schools are at the same point. Because they're saying you need to balance, you're saying that standard college prep is remedial. That is, and you know what? That kind of thinking, it, it, it's why, it's weaving its way into families who have kids in high school too. So, how, I too am very, very upset by this, because this is, if, and you're the curriculum coordinator for this, that's, no, this is, this is not okay. We have a lot more work to do than you think that we do. I'm just saying this.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, Gary, for the presentation. I, I, I do feel these are areas that we need to address, not just in social studies, but I think it goes across many of our content areas where we have this, uh, division and this leveling, uh, where we do, uh, separate the kids early on. Uh, and it is hard to get out, it's almost tracking, and it's hard to get out. And so I, I, I think that's what you're hearing, the concern about. A couple of my questions, in SWS, which I know you're, you're not a part of, but are they unleveled in all their classes? Do you know?
They offer honors credit in all of their classes.
But it's, but it's one, it, but it's not an honors class, it's a mixed class, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so that might, that might be something we want to take a look at, how that works. You know, I don't know, it's just, they have a lot of years of experience looking at how you have a, a heterogeneous class and how you make that work. And then I was wondering about, uh, the opportunity for differentiated uh, instruction or, uh, help for students in an unlevelled class. I, you know, I don't know if students can get extra help if they need it, if they, to make sure that they uh, stay up with, with their classmates. Um, I don't know how that's addressed. Uh, I don't know if you've had a chance. And then, and then my third common question was, when you had that long list of wonderful choices, was there a, uh, history, social studies class on, uh, Latinx history in this country? I'm not, I'm not sure I saw that. I thought I saw Asian American history, and I thought I saw African American history, but I didn't see anything around, um, Hispanic or Latinx, so. That, I would be interested in that thinking, and if that's a possibility, if that's a, uh, if that's something that would be of interest to the student population.
No, we don't curio-, currently offer that class. I have had students from time to time ask about that. There's a longer conversation we've had about the way to, uh, attract enrollment for courses like that. Uh, we have worked hard to sustain the African American Studies class, does reasonably well. We have a wonderful teacher, a veteran teacher of that class, who's actually took the class as a student, Malcolm Conther. And the Asian American Studies class, again, we, we do struggle to maintain enrollment in that class. Uh, I worried about the feasibility of a Latin American Studies class, given the tracker, record of those other classes, as we get told every year to cut more sections, so.
Possibly it could be a semester, sort of a whole year, I don't know.
These are, so African American Studies is your long class, Asian American Studies is a one semester class.
Okay.
Differentiation, yes, we spend a lot of time preparing ourselves to do that, doing that in the classroom. Uh, the year preparation, a lot of that was spent creating differentiated readings, so the students can access the curriculum at different levels. And those readings include, not necessarily different lengths and so on, it's different kinds of scaffolds and supports. And then, you know, part, again, as I said, part of the project design was, it gives students various ways to perform in a, in a task, also gives teachers various opportunities to be the coach. Rather than, you know, we're not standing in front of the room, we're helping kids work through their projects, and nature, in every classroom, students, some students will get more direct support than others. Our co-teaching model is the same in ninth grade as in the other grades, except that in the absence of levels, those class, those co-talk classes are completely heterogeneous. And of course, the co-teachers work with all students. But having two adults in the room allows you to help kids meet their IP goals. Or, you know, or officially in the room, so.
Thank you.
I, I, I do want to apologize again. Um, you know, the thing I'm describing is, so Jennifer, I teach, I teach those classes, I've taught those classes with great love, honor, standard, whatever. Whatever students I'm teaching, I expect a lot of them, and I love them by the end of the year, and I try to love them from day one. And I feel terrible that I, I went, when you said that thing about your child, I feel awful. And I by no means want to ever discourage a kid. On the contrary, nobody asked us to do this. We didn't have to do this. Nobody else did this. The this is, I don't want kids to walk into the classroom with a label. But this is, I want kids to walk in and say, welcome to Brookline High School, let's learn about the world, period, period. That is my intention. You have called, you have called me to account, and rightly so, and I accept it. I made a mistake. And what, what I see in the classes, what is visceral for me, is that in standard class, and I get, I've had wonderful ones, and I've seen wonderful standard classes that achieved a very high level, and a speech I gave with complete sincerity always to my Sarah classes, please understand the bubble we live. You know, people in other towns, their friends don't have as many bathrooms in their houses as your friends. In, in our town, uh, we're richer, we're more democratic. I show them data. I show, you know, you're less likely to meet a Republican here, and I want to tell you something else, that when you go to college, you will be amazed that other kids haven't read research papers. By the way, I know they do it in middle school, I've talked a lot to my middle school colleagues. The point is, our standard classes, I believe that our honors and standard classes could be better mixed together. I mean, I, I don't think we disagree about the outcome. I heard, I heard you tell me what I said was hurtful and stupid, and I apologize.
Jennifer?
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
You had questions as well?
Yes, I had questions, and I, and I hear you, Gary, and I think that you and I do agree on the, the goal. Um, I do think that the classes are, are better together, and I think that they help each other grow, and, um, and I, and I, and I think it's a good goal. And I applaud the social studies department for, for spearheading this work. Um, and I think that I, I have supported, and I think it's a good goal. Um, and I, and I hope other departments continue to think about this work. So, uh, my, here are my, my questions. Um, I had some questions about how WISP has been going, and so wanted to specifically ask about that, and I know that we are now fully into the 22 tap-in building, um, but I was just kind of curious about how the need this year for, the, the continued need this year for cohorting at the beginning of the year, um, and that did affect the schedule, even though we are now in 22 tap-in, how that might have affected some of the need for, for WISP, um, for groupings this year, and how, if you could give some insight on how the co-talk classes might be different in their, and you sort of might have touched a little bit on this when you were talking with Suzanne, about how the co-talk courses might be grouped, like how, how varied are they in their sort of variety of the student body by nature of being a co-talk course?
Yeah, so the short answer is, we are not heterogeneous this year, nearly to the extent we need. So, and that, that is entirely a result of cohorting. The blue cohort, this is all artifact tripsing over to OLS, the blue cohort had all of the special education services. And so those courses had a higher representative, representation of kids, never mind on co-teaching IEPs, on any IEPs. And so red cohort had, here's the indicator. My E block happens to be in red, and I have a third of the kids in my class are in advanced geometry. As you know, in a system where there's leveling somewhere, that will ramify, that will spread through the system. So in a course where a third of the kids are in advanced geometry, the tenor of the class, pure fact, will be different from a class in which half the class is not, you know, what, what, you, you get the picture, in which the specialized services are offered there, none of the advanced geometry kids, or very few of them are there, and so on. Orchestra meets in Z block, pushes the cohorts, and that actually correlates with various traditional measures of academic achievement. Uh, so, we're not heterogeneous. Just look at the standard enrollment honor, the enrollment standard honors in English and track it, you can see lumpiness in our distribution, and we know that we need to, we need to make that work.
So I'm just thinking ahead to sort of how this, this might look in 10th grade. Will there be opportunities for co-talk classes in global studies, or? So that was a question, sort of like, will there be, when you're looking at sort of how your breakdown works out for this, uh, unleveled sort of WISP class going into sort of a three-tiered system, sort of now going into sort of an honors world, a standard world, and then a growing middle body of an unleveled mixed uh, global studies. Will there be opportunities for more heterogeneous groupings, sort of mixed among those, you know, in that middle body? Is that something that we're planning for?
One of the most exciting things about global studies is, we will graduate in social studies for the first time, our co-taught honors kids. They will take that global studies class with co-teaching services. They like to take the honors version of the class and then move on. And then they could do it again in American Studies, which also has co-teaching, mixed levels, I don't know, which level are you taking? So, that is possible, and the same thing will then be true, actually. WISP, you know, you're taking WISP as WISP, it's not an honors class, we don't give it that designation, it's just a class. And so, we're getting to the point, we're getting closer to the point where IEP and level are completely in principle. Just work on the ground to make that look more realistic, but, yeah.
So there will be possible for co-talk students to take it, but only as an honors option? Is that what you're saying?
It's an option. In other words, if you're in the class.
You can take it either way.
The fact that you're there with an IEP that says you get a co-teacher support, the co-teacher's there for everybody, they're in, like I say, I can't work with you, and, uh, everybody in the class will decide at the end of the first quarter, honors or standard, and we will exclude no one from that option.
And there'll be four sections of global studies, is that what?
We are planning for co-teaching in two of the four.
Two of the four. And then the other question I just had was more about the philo-, just in general, the philosophy on the, on one of your original slides. What, what grade level is that offered to?
Juniors are eligible. Um, it's a ju-, it's a one-term class, all of the one-term optional classes in social studies are open to juniors and seniors. It is offered only at the honors level, that's a historical remnant, that's one of the oldest courses in the catalog, and that's, we, we haven't changed that.
Do we run it every year?
We do. Yes, I can't remember the last time we haven't, there may have been a year in there when we didn't, but it is also, so I will tell you, the one-term classes struggle for enrollment, particularly in the spring. In the time I've been at the high school, college, you know, lots of things have changed about the world. The cell phone's number one, social media, cell phone is number one. But college admissions has changed pretty dramatically. Used to be college admissions happened much later in the year. Now, as you, I'm sure you know, college decision-making is a fall activity. Second semester senior classes are extremely challenging to fill. That's another thing we should all rethink.
All right, has anyone who has not yet, uh, spoken, any questions? All right, has anyone who has not yet spoken, any questions? All right, thank you for coming, Mr. Schiffman, we are running a bit behind schedules, we're gonna move on to our next item. Thank you. So next up, we have an update on public schools of Brookline, sustainability initiatives and environmental education with the Brookline High School teacher Roger Grandy and Driscoll teacher Francesca Start. But I'm first going to toss it over to Stephen to introduce them. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thanks, David. Thanks for docketing this, so I think you probably all remember back in December when three BHS students brought us a petition for action on climate change. And that resulted in some conversations with them and with distorted teachers and other community members who are interested in environmental education, looking for whether there was actions for school committee to take. So rather than continue with advocacy around actions, we thought it would be best just to lay out some more data for the school committee to consider, especially going into our summer workshop for us to consider whether, whether we may want to elevate sustainability to a core value or goal of PSP. And whether there are any more additional actions we might want to take. The presentation will be first Roger will lay out the problem in a bit more detail and he's going to present some of his latest quantitative data. And his findings from that data, and then Francesca, if you'll forgive me Francesca, my example of a solution, will present some of her activities with the key program at Driscoll. And then we have some time for discussion. So with that, I'll hand it over to Roger and thanks for docketing this.
Good evening and thanks, everybody, hear me okay? Okay. I'm gonna share my slides in just a moment, I want to just have, give a special shout out to the newest member of the school committee Laura Clevis, who is my current student and also wrote a great research paper recently about challenging the Trujillo dictatorship. Hello Laura. Let me go to sharing my screen. Second. Okay, are you seeing just my slide then? Great.
We can see your notes as well, Roger, in case there's anything.
That wasn't supposed to happen, but I'll I'll just look to my right as I'm talking and get a small neck ache. All right, let me just make a little space on my computer, one second, sorry. So the question that I want to explore tonight is, is climate change a concern for schools? And that's why I want to begin my presentation, I want to end my presentation now by saying yes. No, I'm kidding, I'll give you the longer version of that. But I really do want to thank you for making this time and for following up on what Stephen has initiated here in school committee. And to see greater clarification of some of the ideas that he's laid out. And specifically about something that I've been working on with many others in the system and with, in the parent committee and students, my staff, K to 12, to really understand what we believe is, should be a priority. And I'm gonna give you some details for why I would answer yes to that question. But I wanna, I wanna stress from the outset that, and, and I assure you that this is not about advancing a special interest of mine and Francesca's and as I said, many other educators, the climate crisis has arrived. It will profoundly impact the lives of young people who are charged with preparing to prosper intellectually, emotionally and financially. Climate change will significantly disrupt that ambition. And that's already happening for millions of people across the world, so, you know, I read about the many dimensions of climate change pretty much every day, and I could talk about nightmare scenarios, I'm, I'm not going to focus on that tonight, but instead, why I believe strongly that climate change and climate justice specifically actually presents us with a pretty powerful opportunity. So back in the fall, the conversation that we're continuing tonight began with a petition that students delivered to you, assigned by many hundreds of students at Brookline High School. The conversation has been going on for a long time among students and others, but that's when it was formally elevated here to school committee. And so they signed the following statement. We can no more afford to ignore the climate emergency now than we could last month or last year. It is here, now, and it impacts, and its impacts will only worsen the longer we go without taking collective action. As the COVID-19 pandemic reminds us, we ignore scientific expertise and the rising toll of a crisis at our own peril. Human-driven climate change increasingly threatens our physical and mental health, our food system, our democracy, the status of immigrants in our community, our confidence in science and truth, and the gains we have made towards racial and gender justice. So a few months ago, in March, I administered a survey that about a fourth of BHS students responded to a sustainability survey. And this was, as you can see, the respondents were pretty representative across nine through 12. And they were representative more or less by race and gender as well. And you have the slides, so you can look at them in more detail. Nearly all BHS students are confident that global warming is happening and eight in 10 believe humans are responsible. Three-fourths of those expect that climate change will impact them personally from a moderate amount to a great deal. They understand that Americans are already being impacted as are people around the world, that's the graph on the right. Sadly, two-thirds are uncertain that we will reduce global warming and about a fourth believe that we are not willing to change our behavior to make warming stop. So I want to pause for a moment and consider what this means. It tells us that our schools have not given them a clear view of the world they will inhabit. That we have not made an effort to provide them with the skills and resilience to meet a challenge unlike any that humanity has ever faced. Humans today already live in climate conditions never experienced by humans before. The data also tells us that we have not given students a reason to be hopeful about their future. So as a teacher who's devoted the last two decades, a little bit more of my practice to supporting and encouraging young people to find their voice and to engage with peers and adults to make change, I'm confident that the best antidote to despair is empowerment. Ignoring young people's reality, especially when it is menacing, is in fact disempowering. Forty percent of BHS students report having had no classroom experience learning about climate change. A quarter, only a quarter have learned about climate change in more than two classes, which by the way is a decline since I gave the survey in 2019, just before the pandemic. Whereas half of BH students want climate change education all four years. And nearly 70% say they want to learn skills to prepare them to address climate change. So there's many ways you can hear student voice on this, you'll hear this from Francesca. We send you this online publication called GreenZine Brookline, we, I co-edit this with Kathy Butler, Lawrence Parent, and there's many other teachers and students involved, so please take a look at this, these are our students and what they have to say through arts, through painting, through poetry, through essays and editorials and news. I think Brooklyn educators do an outstanding job of preparing young people for a world that we imagined 20 years ago. Before we all saw clearly that polarization, authoritarianism, nationalism, revival of severe racism and climate change would tear us apart, I think we're catching up to that reality now. It's not just that many educators don't want to address climate change and climate justice, we just collectively haven't imagined it yet and haven't had the support and call to do so. So you might ask, you know, what is it really the role of schools to address climate change? The image is meant to suggest that we're sort of ignoring it and again, at our own peril. Climate change is adding to our health burden, more severe allergies, more acute asthma, exposure to extreme heat. One-fifth of all deaths worldwide now are due to air pollution and burning fossil fuels accounts for a large share of that. Even if our students don't personally experience increased morbidity now, they enter a world that does. And some of our students live in neighborhoods that are 10 degrees hotter than some of the tree line segments of Brookline. Heat is agitation and it wears heavily on the body, and actually in the next issue of GreenZine, there's an interview with a local physician who writes about what she's seeing in her patients on that matter. More acute drought is also making it harder to grow food in many places, including Central America, and is a major factor contributing to the immigration crisis. So even if those immigrants don't show up in our schools, the racism and the nationalism that is injected into the immigration debate does. And our black and brown students have to shoulder that burden, we all do, but they're going to feel it more intimately and more intensely, and of course, our schools themselves generate greenhouse gas emissions. Moreover, climate change is becoming a significant contributor to men, to the mental health crisis that our students are experiencing. One of five BHS students have climate change on their minds most days, according to our survey. More than one-third of students report having had thoughts or feelings in the previous month about climate change that negatively impacted their mental health or emotional well-being or caused anxiety or depression. And nearly 10%, nearly one out of 10 students report that those thoughts or feelings interfered with their ability to function normally in school. Climate disrupted world is a threat to young people's mental health, they know that and they are telling us to pay attention. So, you know, we're, we're in a slow-moving chronic crisis. And it's accelerating and will become more and more acute. All major institutions must respond to climate change, the healthcare system, industry, local government, our Department of Defense, which has had climate change on its radar way before many others have. And actually, I think schools have a really special opportunity and I want to say a little bit about that now. So becoming a school system with a climate justice and sustainability, with climate justice and sustainability at its core can help us center what are actually some of our best pedagogical practices. Interdisciplinary design produces some of our best learning. Climate change education demands that we build interdisciplinary modules and not just teach it in science. Climate change is a problem that's created by social and political forces, it will be solved by social and political movements and must be learning is best assessed in project-based learning. It's where we yield some of our strongest interest and outcomes. And working in diverse teams is the only way we'll solve the climate crisis, project-based learning models that. Outdoor education may be some of our, maybe our best actual social emotional learning strategy. It cultivates stewardship of the planet. And I can, I'd love to say more about why I think this is really a powerful tool that we need to employ more. Climate justice is racial justice, climate education done well requires that we dig deeper into race and racism learning, and I'll say more about that in a moment. Places, too far, oops, okay. Placing sustainability at the center means that we give students the opportunity to empower themselves, to lead and all the benefits that accrues. And climate justice offers us a school-wide mission, a center to coalesce around and build community. We don't, at least at the high school, I don't really think we offer students an opportunity to belong to a meaningful mission right now, I'm not saying this has to be the only thing at the center, but it's a way to bring us together and to, to say to students, to honor students about what is their future and what are their needs and to give them an opportunity to have a say and a voice and an impact on that. Combined, when we respond to our, sorry, one more time, when we respond to our students and teach them about the real world, as I said, we really honor them and I think they engage. So I want you to imagine if we offered students a school that promised them a chance to learn how to alter the course of a climate disaster, and in the process they learned how to compute, how to analyze, how to write, how to sing, how to, how to distill fact from fiction. We are in a special moment, I think as a school, this is not all dread, I think this is actually excitement that we need to take advantage of. And if we're committed to racial justice, then we must commit to addressing climate change. Globally, those who are being hit the hardest, the most immediate are black and brown. Climate change compounds pre-existing inequity and creates vulnerability to xenophobia and nationalism. So I want to return now to the petition that I began with and remind you of what else it called for. Students asked that you recognize that the core mission of schools is to prepare young people to thrive and that climate change threatens that. Students asked for the opportunity to better understand climate change and to cultivate skills to become resilient and equipped to address inequity. And students asked that you finally declare that climate change is an emergency, that it threatens the welfare of youth and that our school system embark on a plan that includes all groups of stakeholders by the start of the 22, 23 school year. I know you received that, I think back in, in September, 22, 23 is approaching, but that's what the, that's what the petition called for. So here's what I think we need to do, and I'll be concluding in just a couple moments. I think first we need to adopt a new core value and this I think was embedded in the, in the petition. And I've worked with several others to provide you with one for your consideration. And it reads as follows, graduate green, that's the core value. We aim to strengthen our sustainability practices and curriculum and to engage students, staff and families towards that end. All students will engage in a K to 12 learning sequence that includes yearly outdoor experiences to understand how human activity and decisions impact our natural systems, cause climate change and exacerbate inequity. Student learning will cultivate skills to resolve social, political and personal impacts of climate change and examine the inequities and opportunities for justice in a rapidly transforming world. The public schools of Brookline will support opportunities for civic engagement and student leadership within our schools to address climate change and its intersection with race, gender, geography, nutrition, economy and well-being. And a core value like this signals to school leaders, to educators, to students, to families that we expect students to graduate with a realistic understanding of the world they'll inherit and how to navigate that. And as I said, I've been working with others, many others, for years to get a garden established at BHS to make composting real. I don't want to ask for that anymore. I want instead, and only to get a tepid response, I'm not blaming anyone in particular who's listening right now. But that's sort of been the experience that I and others have had on that, on some of those particular issues. But rather I want school leaders to come to me and others working on this issue to say, what do you need us to do? I suspect that nearly everyone, if not everyone, listening right now embraces the science of climate change. But we are enacting climate denial because we know what is happening and we know we need to act, but we're not. So what message does that send to young people about leadership, about trust and about what we expect from them, and I include myself in that. I think the process that I'm calling for and that others are calling for can be a creative and fruitful and incredibly rewarding process, I'm just giving you an example of a California standard or process, I should say. That it can be a process that really builds excitement and community and offers students and educators a vision for hope, for change, for resilience and a way to embrace, rather than deny or fear the future, which I think is where we're heading at the present. So I'll end here, thinking about a couple next steps. I want you to think about this notion of a, of core value, graduate green. I would love to see an advisory committee file, I think this is what Stephen was calling for, to begin to review, and I'm not calling necessarily for a, a formal review of K to 12 curriculum. I know that's a huge amount of work, but really for a group of people to come together, students, staff, educators, community people who have some expertise and insight, to think about what do we do already? Where are the opportunities to begin to think about coalescing around climate change at various points in our K to 12? And what benchmarks, skills and experiences should students have when they leave eighth and 12? And then again, as I said, to think about where are the key points for climate justice and environmental education? Again, thinking along the lines of interdisciplinary and project-based learning. I think we really need to support summer and other professional development to begin to develop those grade level project-based curriculum. I know now, thanks to Leslie, that there is now some more additional support for student gardeners, educator gardeners. We need to build a BHS garden. And I should say there are some really great possible beneficiaries for that, there's the culinary class, but there's also some of our self-enclosed classrooms and students that could really benefit from, from some additional social emotional learning support and experiences and reduce that opportunity gap. There's just so many benefits of giving that to students and we could, again, we could talk about that. We need to enact universal composting, I know it's not the, the I know it's not the resolution to the climate crisis, but it's a gateway habit to stewardship and it can reinforce the mission of a sustainable school. I want there to be more support for the farm-to-school movement. Last night, we had our one year and maybe you may not have heard so much about that. I'm happy to talk about that as well. We've had the end of our sort of founding year. And there's a lot that can be done there, particularly in the cafeteria. And lastly, I think it'd be great to ask our job candidates, not as a make or break question, but just to begin to make that part of our practice about their vision for climate justice and sustainability. So I'm going to close here. I look forward to more discussion and I'm going to hand things off to Francesca. Thank you.
In my class, this would be a time I would say, I think everybody needs to have an exercise break. I'm sorry. In order to get my kids to attend, they usually need to stretch. So I don't know, you guys need a glass of water or some kind of beverage or something, but good. Might need to stretch. I don't know. It is nine-thirty and you have stuff to do after me too. So I understand that. Appreciate it. We call it meetingitis in my class. I don't know if you guys have it. But if you're starting to get meetingitis, you can tell me, I think this is videoed, so you could watch it later. You're bored. So, all right. I did create, not finish, a slideshow presentation, but I don't think it'll go to waste because I might want to give it again because this is such a huge part of my life. And I hope it will be and already is part of your life. I actually hope that what I'm telling you is something you all already agree with. So I'm going to, if you don't know who I am, by the way, I'm talking as if you all know who I am. My name is Francesca Stark. I teach fifth grade at the Driscoll School in Brookline. And the reason I'm here now is Steve Anenberg invited me because I've been hounding him about how to make environmental education, climate justice, environmental justice, how do we make it into the whole school system and not just as a club or clubs? And so here I am with that purpose in mind. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. And I hope, again, you can turn off your screen, stretch, whatever you need to do. I understand. All right. Let me share. It's funny sharing my screen. I did it so much when I had my COVID classroom. Okay. Oh yeah, I'll go to present mode. Notice it says final. Yes, final Keep Club School Committee presentation. It's actually not the final, but let's see. Here we go. Share. Oh no, not that share.
We can see your notes, Francesca.
Yeah, there's not too many. Okay, here we go. I think this is it. All right. All right. So hold on, let me just go up. All right. So I run an organization called the Keep Club. KEEP stands for, it's, oh, it's a grade, oh, wait a minute, can you guys see me? Okay, KEEP stands for Kids Expect Environmental Protection. And then I put, that's a Carolina wren that's looking at you over there. And they have a beautiful bird call. And so I put BEEP stands for Birds Expect Environmental Protection, but they don't have a club. So currently, the Keep Club has 52, if not more, fifth to eighth graders in it. And that's no small petunias. And I am running it and I've been running the Keep Club since 2015. Before then, I ran like every year we had a project. But then my student said, Ms. Stark, you should make it a club so we can still come. So in 2015, which is seven and three-quarters years ago, I started it. And it's been, it started with probably 20-something students and the number of students is growing. And we meet every Thursday, as it shows in the slide, from 2:30 to 3:45. Usually students during work to rule, that got put off. But usually we meet from 2:35 to around 4:00, 3:45, 4:00. And we also have a lot of events during the school year. Now, not all 52 students show up every week. They have Russian School of Math, they have martial arts, they have swim team, they have lots of things. But usually, I will say, I have about 35 to 40 students who show up every week. And you might be wondering why. And I actually, I thought like, I know why they show up, but I did ask them. I said, I'm going to speak to the school committee tonight. Do you want to say why you come? And so I got a few quotes for you. Here's one. Let's see, I'm trying to remove myself so I can see the screen. Okay. Annette said, I go because it feels good to know I'm doing something to help our earth. It is also fun to be with friends and be doing something that I know is for a good cause. And then Andy said, I go to Keep Club to learn. I understand that climate change is a serious issue that people need to learn about and help prevent. I go to Keep Club to both learn about the environment, become closer to nature and to learn how to help. The environment and climate change is a very important thing to learn. That is why I go, not because of my friends or my brother, because I want to, because I know I must help. All right, I'm not going to read all this to you. I realize what's going on. Irene, who just showed up from France, wrote about why she comes. I like this line too. I go to Keep Clubs because we help the environment, not just complain about it. Isn't that a good line? Also, because it's fun to use our brains to help the environment creatively. And then Han Su came from Korea this year, said, the Keep Club helps me to understand nature's values and do the right thing for the environment. Just knowing or learning through books or media is quite different from acting. We learned what we could do by nature by acting in the Keep Club. And Han Su is leaving. He is leaving, going back to Korea, but he's going to open up a Keep Club Korea. We have one in Norway. We're international. So what happens is, we usually start all together in my room. They all come in and I share accomplishments and goals and what we've been up to and the subcommittees. And usually they listen to me a little longer than they normally would because of the snacks. Because they always come super hungry. And I have the snacks at the front of the room, which I dish out after I give my mini lesson. And I don't allow, because we're an environmental club, we don't have plastics. So we usually get homemade snacks that the kids make. And it's delicious and they love their snacks. So it's not always just about the world. It's also just because they come and they eat and they collaborate. So after I speak, we go into subcommittees. These are some photos of the subcommittees. I'm going to tell you a little bit about them. And I'm going to try to not, I'm not going to read you everything, but I want to show you that we have a lot of them. And this is a link to the agenda that was January 20th, 2022. So I'm putting, I put this one on because it was interesting. We had, can you guys see? Okay, can you see this? We had a special guest, which was actually Roger's student. And her name's Hattie Lang and she is the older sister of another Keep Club member. She was helping to organize the TAP Challenge. And I had another photo, but I didn't get it ready. And she came to talk to the Keep Club about supporting them. That day, we also were getting our signs of nature. We have a bulletin board committee. And that is, that picture there is a fake cigarette butt. And it's because, so we have some parent volunteers and they were making a bulletin board of the five biggest polluters in the ocean. And the number one or the fifth one, wait a minute, I have to look, cigarette butts. In fact, I put it somewhere, but, oh yeah, Andy counted how many cigarette butts he saw on his walk home and he counted 83 cigarette butts. So I let them know that. Composting, the Keep Club has been working with the Department of Public Works and are two wonderful new people who work there named Shama and Katie. They both work with recycling and zero waste. And we're coordinating with them to try to increase composting in Brookline using with Black Earth Composting. And we're going to have a committee this summer to get other environmental teachers and Parks Department to work on that. We also coordinated with the BU Rotary Club, which was part of the BU Rotary Club. And these BU students started to come and visit the Keep Club every week and helped us because I need help. And I can do it, but I can't do it all. And the students who are there to do projects need more adults there. We have a sewing circle. They do, and they also create environmental merchandise that we can sell or teach people about. Now, I'm going to scroll through this quickly, but I just, I want to just stop my share a second. I'm not going to read it all to you. I want to say that we have so many committees because project-based learning and getting kids to be invested in what they do is a fifth-grade teacher, a first-grade teacher, a 10th-grade teacher is pivotal. And so I don't force kids. I don't say, hey, you, you're going to be on the single-use plastics. And hey, you, you're going to work on, you know, PFAS. Like, I don't do that. I just try to inform them. I give them news articles and then I let them figure out what they want to do. And as a result of that, I'm pretty good at project-based learning, but I need, I need more adults and it needs to be more in the school system because they want to do it and I can't do it alone, although I'm trying very hard. So I'm going to show you, I'm going to share my screen again, these committees. Oops, share screen. Okay. So here are some of our committees. We have a video PSA called Breaking Up With Plastic. I'll show you. And one of the girls dresses up as plastic and she's the villain. You won't be surprised to hear. We have the Bulletin Board Committee. We have a compost and snag, I'll show you what a snag is to teach kids about composting. We have an education department where kids create public service announcements for every grade in the school and then go into different classrooms. And this here shows what they do, who's on the committee and who their adult allies are. We have a fishing sustainability group because they love to go fishing and they want to teach kids about that. Let me just show you, like, oops, that's not them. They, Orson Max, well, some of them. So here it is. You can sort of see sustainable seafood choices they were working on. We worked with Mothers Out Front to try to get Brookline and other towns to understand how much methane gas is killing all our trees. We have a group that works, that there are journalists and they work with the Driscoll Dragonian and the remarkable GreenZine Magazine that Azavia comes into our class and helps the kids. And it's something Roger and Kathy Butler and a lot of Keep Clubbers have written articles. We have a litter brigade. What they do, I'll show you pictures. We have a lot of trash grabbers and they go out and collect piles of garbage every week. We have a merch sewing circle because we have kids who know how to sew. They made masks and bags and all these things. We have a group that's looking at PFAS and chemicals. And one of the BU students was teaching them about it because he's a chemistry major. We have a petition going to try to scrap the cap, which is a petition for those caps that are on like cream and juice where you could just open up the carton, but there's this ridiculous cap. We're trying to get rid of it. We have kids who are working to, with Save the Harbor, Save the Bay. We have a parent who's helping coordinate them. We did a river cleanup, which I'll show you a picture of it, the Charles River, that coordinated Mothers Out Front with the Rotary Club. BU and BC Law students showed up. And then I have this Keep Club Summer Camp where I take kids who aren't in camp and I offer them days and we go and we do cleanups and kayaking and go to parks. And again, I do it by myself, but it's a summer program like what Roger was talking about, that kids who, not everybody's in camp, you know, some kids are wondering what to do. So we go out and we go around, we take the train and go places. So let's see if I can go to my next slide. Okay, let's see. All right. So that is a picture of the plastic.
You're not sharing right now.
Oh, I'm not? Oh, we, just to myself. That's terrible. Okay, I have to find you guys. Oh, there you are. Okay, I'm going to share. And I'm sorry, I told Roger I'd be really brief and I just don't do brief very well. I'm trying. So can you see my screen now? That is the eco, that's them preparing, that's plastic played by Callista Garn. She's dressed in complete plastic and she's trying to show Whole Foods to get rid of it. That is Grace dressed up as a Whole Foods. And that is part of the eco versus plastic. Let's see. I'm going to keep going. Okay, that is one of the bulletin boards. See the cigarette butts? They made so many fake cigarette butts at the bottom. Those are all the greatest ocean plastics. That's a snag that Victor Kussman, who's a parent volunteer, helped the kids make. And two of our Keep Club students saying that that's a snag. It's in our bird sanctuary, which may get demolished once Driscoll gets torn down. We're hoping some of it remains. And then I just was talking about why students come. I also let parents know that I was going to speak to you tonight. And I got a couple of quotes. One parent said, participating in Keep Club provided our daughter with invaluable lessons and experiences. It offers a positive, optimistic, action-oriented and empowering perspective to address today's most pressing challenges. Keep Club creates an opportunity for kids to think about the responsibility as citizens and members of the community, experiencing the positive and imitate, I think, immediate impact of their actions on the environment, such as the Charles River cleaning. It has motivated the kids to identify and pursue more opportunities to care for their community and the environment, as well as appreciate the beauty of nature, animals, birds and plants. These are all valuable skills and life lessons that will serve our kids and help them make a positive impact in their community. They wrote that to share with you. I was so grateful.
Hey Francesca, I want to make sure we have some time for.
Okay, all right. I'm going to cut to the chase. All right. So, okay. I'm just going to say now, all right, I'm going to come back to you. Here's the thing. This isn't like a show and tell of how wonderful the Keep Club. This is about how, when students come to me and they're writing articles for GreenZine and they're picking up trash and they're learning about composting and we have first graders are learning about bugs and we have third graders who are learning about mammals, but they're supposed to soon be learning about trout because they're changing it. This needs to be better coordinated in our schools. Students need from pre-K, I actually said kindergarten or kindergarten, and then a teacher said to me, no, pre-K. Students from pre-K to 12, every year, need to be outside learning about their own ecosystems, the birds, the bugs, invasive species. Most adults don't even know the difference between soil and dirt and why we need to have it to keep our gardens growing. I'm not sure when they do butterflies that they really understand what pollinators are and why we need them. We, it's like, we have to coordinate. We have to coordinate the coordinators. We have to make sure that this is not an afterthought. And if I move on to other things or retire or whatever, this can't just be a club. It has to be integrated. The kids, they show up for a reason. I'm excited they show up every time, but we as a school committee can't just make it an afterthought. It has to be woven into everything we do. That's the end. Thank you.
Thanks Francesca and thanks Roger. I just want to make a couple of comments and then open it up for questions. I just, I've said a bunch about it already. I just want to highlight that I think in Roger's presentation, I think there was a lot of data demonstrating how kids experience this as urgent and they see it as cross-disciplinary also. I think one concern that I heard previously when we discussed it is, what are we calling for new curriculum or are we calling for additional assets to be developed? For me, part of why it's good to hear Francesca talk also is that I think there's a lot of innovation happening in the district already. For me, part of why it's, it's good to hear Francesca talk also is that I think there's a lot of innovation happening in the district already. And it's not the job of the superintendent to spur or generate that. Innovation, but to start to harvest it, just to keep the environmental metaphor. And, and the third point is that I, I don't think it's, it's equitable or reliable just to rely on. Some charismatic educators sprinkled across the district. I think. The, the urgency of this issue and, uh, the amount of stuff that's out there should make it that every kid can have access to some of this. So I'll just stop there and open it up for questions. And thanks again, Roger and Francesca for coming to present today.
All right, so who has some questions, comments? Jennifer?
I just want to say, first of all, thank you so much. You have been doing so much incredible work. Um, and advocacy around these issues. Um, we've heard from both of you or I've heard from both of you in multiple venues. Over multiple years and you've been spearheading this work in so many ways throughout our community. And so I just want to give. Both of you, and I know you're working with other colleagues, but in particular, both of you have done an incredible amount of work and have been shouldering. A lot of, um, a lot of this work. And so I personally want to thank both of you for doing this. This is amazing. And I want to thank you for persevering. Um, and, and continuing this work. It's really important and the students and the community, um, and I'm sure your fellow educators, thank you for doing this work. Um, and so I guess I, I do have a question. Um, what is, and, and to Steve's point, I guess, or Stephen's point. What are some things that you would hope, um, as a result of this presentation that? The school committee might envision, um, as some work that would fall in our purview that, that might come out, um, that might support this kind of work?
Um, mind if I start? Um. First of all, that's, I really appreciate you saying that, Jennifer. That's, um, meaningful to hear that. Um, yeah, so thank you. I mean, yes, with, with Stephen and I think you reiterated, you know, just calling for a curriculum right off the bat is.
Roger, could you talk a little louder? Cause we may be able to hear you, but people who are listening on big may not hear you.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. No, I appreciate that. I hope you can hear me better now. Um, I was. Uh, you say that, I appreciate that a lot. And yes, suddenly just calling for a lot of curriculum, I think is not what, um. What we're, we're immediately asking for. The idea of a core value is that it's, you know, begins to set the tone. And it begins, you know, from the top of the school system to say, okay, this is something we, we want to cultivate and value. We will find the way to begin to do that. It's not gonna happen immediately. We understand that. But, you know, I think it's been happening, uh, too slowly. And again, that's something that I think the system, uh, holds responsibility for, not any particular individual or group. I do think that the idea of having a, you know, call what you want, exploratory. Group or subcommittee or advisory group that can really begin to kind of look. Again, not formally as a review, but begin to sort of look at our K to 12. Experiences, curriculum and otherwise, um, and look for the opportunities, not to say, let's reinvent, let's add. Yeah, as Francesca highlighted, you know, there's a lot going on, for example, in science. Curriculum, um, it doesn't, it's not necessarily fashioned into sustainability. Uh, curriculum, social studies, you know, where I teach, um, I would say it's the most attention. Because for reasons I highlighted, uh, that's where the problem solving comes in. That, that is in fact what social studies is about, right? It's about democ-. Democracy, civic engagement, et cetera. That's what we're really training students to do and we may as well train them for the biggest challenge. So just to say briefly again, I, I think we have to begin with. A group of committed individuals who have been empowered to provide some advisory. Information after some specific amount of time to say, okay, here's where we think we should begin. So that's one thing, but there's some like shorter term things like. Let's make the composting happening. Let's get the garden at BHS going. You know, some smaller things that should be easier and faster. I hope I answered the, the question.
Um. I would love it another time too, because I realize this is late and everybody is tired, but. I think that, uh, we should be. Uh, coordinating the curriculum that we already have. And as Roger said, it's in every subject. And for example. We have incredible, um, African-American scholars, um, and Latina scholars and, uh, the, the GSA allies and. All, all of these clubs need to be working together, both after school and in school. And it isn't just science, like Roger said, we, when kids are writing, I mean, kids write persuasive essays. Any of you who have kids in the Brookline Schools know that from kindergarten all the way up, they are writing argumentative essays. If there's not a greater way to write an argumentative essay, it's with this. And also just to create citizen scientists all the way through. I think that for the school committee to work, uh, there's, I, there's money. The, the Department of Public Works has. Be gotten a grant, um, to increase composting. We, as Roger said, we're working with this, uh, farm to school program. I think my goal is about coordinating, a coordinating. My biggest goal is that the school committee, the curriculum coordinators, the teachers in each school and across the grade, the Department of Public Works. The Food Service Department, break down their silos and talk to each other and we can coordinate this. That's my biggest goal.
Zen?
Yeah, thank you, David. Well, actually Francesca and Roger, that's kind of what I was going to say. I feel like the burden is on the science department and I don't think science department alone can do this. And so, um, I struggle a little bit with how to make this broader than science because I think it is. But, um, um, you know, we're pretty silo in our schools, particularly six through 12. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I, I kind of struggle a little bit. You know, we have these projects all over, but. You know, again, it doesn't really come together and, um. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure about that. Francesca, I saw my husband's name on that list. So that's, I know he's worked with you. Right, right. You know, he does. Um, but you know, there's, there's the other question of politics in town. Now, I don't want to get into all the politics that we just had town meeting and that, that went. The way it went. Um, but you know, it's, it's living sustainability. It's not just talking about it. And when there are opportunities. To live our values, that's when it becomes really critical and important. But I don't actually have all the answers. So, but I welcome the fact, all the hard work you're doing and, um. You know, I, I think we have to keep bringing it up and saying how important it is and look for those opportunities. Uh, where we can find them for sure and, and, and to raise it up, you know, um.
So I really, I think that we need to work with each, like, I, I am happy to do this, not. I mean, none of this is paid, but if you tell anybody about the amount of tons of plastic that's in the gar- in, in the, the ocean. People, adults don't understand. I mean, the math involved in even understanding the metric weight. Of any of it to understand, um. It, to understand this problem that we're in, in terms of also what Roger was saying, in terms of us, uh, noticing. Um, for example, like during the strike, which you guys were all aware, well aware of. Teachers were marching and we were marching in a place which had very few trees and all the teachers were going. It was hot. And it was stressful and every time we went under a tree. Everybody was aware of the tree and I was saying, saying to people, yeah. We, we need the tree cover. It, it was like this terrible moment where we were walking and it was, it was also. The, the trees were like the only relief. And so again, I think we need to make everybody in our town come together and protect and notice. Uh, the environment that we have. It's not just, it's all of us together and I'm happy. I know there are teachers who could look at every single one of the curriculum, work with Leslie, Leslie and. By the way, Leslie, is, are you still here? Uh, yeah, Leslie's here.
I'm here.
Yeah, you've been super supportive. So I think this is a long, it's not gonna be done just like this. But it's, it's not rocket science. That's the thing I also want to drive home. It's already in the curriculum. It's just. It's, it's just putting a magnifying glass and coordinating it and getting you, I think the school committee has to make the commitment. To get the people and. I, I, I actually, I think you guys would know even better than I would, but how do we? How do we make the time and space to get the people to come together and make it happen?
I can just say very briefly i- in response to Suzanne's, uh, question. Yes, this is huge and big, but I, I think we're talking about sort of some starting points. And I do want to echo the idea that I think what you say matters. Um, and I think. You know, we want to start hearing school leadership begin to, uh, embrace some of the language and, you know. We don't all know what to do. We don't know how to go forward. We do know there's a big crisis that's growing. And, you know, we have to begin to have that conversation. So I think I would love to hear. Uh, more of that from school leader, from, you know, building leaders from, um, uh, from system leaders. And I do want to recognize that Leslie has been spending a lot of time, uh, you know, with many teachers, but it's, you know. We needed to kind of have some, uh, a little more support, I think, for that effort.
I, I would just add to Suzanne, I agree with you. I think this definitely goes beyond science and science curriculum too. And, and that's, it's very much how, um. The, how kids are experiencing this issue. When I, when I started talking with Alice and Nada and Brian. I, I, I guess I was thinking mostly about, um, climate change goals and. And the science, uh, having kids understand the science behind it and. Uh, to advocate where they can, but they didn't use the same language in response to me. They talked about climate justice more often than they talked about climate change. And, and it took a while for me to dawn on me that they really see this as, as, uh, is. As living in, in different domains than I grew up seeing it. So, so I, I think there are opportunities across the curriculum, but also across the educational experience that PSP offers.
Ellen?
Uh, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think, uh, I just want to pipe in with. All of the, what has been happening in the new school buildings that we have. We have really been sort of living what and, and building what you guys are talking about. We're making them, um, greener buildings. We're making them without, uh, VOCs. We're, I'm trying to think what that stands for. Somebody knows what VOC stands for, but it's, you know, the off, the gases that come in many of the products that are used in, in new buildings. We're looking at. We obviously have geothermal at, at, uh. Uh, at Driscoll and we're, we're planning on it for Pierce, uh, geothermal, uh, heating systems. And these are things that kids can learn from too. It's, you know, I think they're important things that, that have a huge impact. On, on the system. So just as an aside, there, there are things we're, we're looking into. Yeah, we all are putting in electric chargers at every school to encourage people to use electric cars and, and staff so that they can have a place to charge. Um, so those are the sorts of things I think that are also happening along with what you're saying. One other quick piece, there used to be a horticulture class at the high school. And I wonder if a class like that might encourage kids then to participate in a garden. You know, because you're learning, uh, by, you know, all the things that, that go along with that. So, that, those are the two thoughts I had. Thank you. And thank you for all you're doing.
Anyone else?
Uh, just to Helen, Helen, that one thing though is I agree, it's great to have all that, but I think my mission. Is of course to have a climate, um, protective building and all of that, but we have to. Make sure, and this sounds simple, but kids need to be outside and they need to be digging in the dirt.
I, I agree.
Yeah, of course. And, and all I'm saying is that teachers have to be supported. To get their kids outside and teachers need to know, oh, in kindergarten, they're learning about this cycle. There needs to be. A coordination so that a amount amongst everybody and so that. It, so that, um, everybody is, as Roger actually has coined, graduates green. And, um, really, really, that's what we need to do.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We are running a bit behind, so I'm gonna have to end this for now, but thank you very much, uh, to both you, Mr. Grandy and to you, Ms. Stark, for your presentation. Uh, to you as well, Stephen, for helping put it together. Uh, this was tremendously informative. And we certainly recognize that there's a lot more work to be done on sustainability and try to find a way to weave it. Both through curriculum and through our lived-in experiences as a school community.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. So that brings us to subcommittee and liaison reports, and I'm hoping that we can. Get through this in maybe 15 minutes instead of allotted 30. So if you have something particularly important to say, then go ahead, but. Otherwise, we can put it off to the 16th. I prefer that. Go ahead, Mariah.
Super quick, um, finance and policy. We're having a joint meeting on Wednesday to talk about, can you hear me? You can hear me. Um, to talk about the revised finance policy and then. Um, on the accounts payable warrant tracking in the past month. We've reviewed, I've reviewed one, one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. Um, worth of bills and nothing particularly stands out in my mind as being. Um, very exciting among them, just the regular sort of things that we see. So that's my report.
All right, thank you. Jennifer?
Uh, yes, I do want to give the committee an update based on our last curriculum subcommittee meeting and just to sort of give you a, a little bit of a heads up on some, uh, possibility of. International travel, um, which we have not previously really, um, spoken about. There is. The potential that, um, we'll be looking at some international travel in the year ahead. Um, I, that does not mean that we're looking at doing the China exchange program next year, although we will be looking to continue the relationship next year in a more. Um, remote fashion, um, continuing that relationship so that we'll be able to. Bring the exchange program, um, into a full exchange. Um, the school in China is actually going to be going, undergoing some construction. So we don't know when that will be up and running on both parts, our, our part and their part. Um, but regarding international travel, I just want the committee and the chair to be aware that we may be looking at, um. Some approval of international travel applications. As you all know. Um, according to school committee policy, the school committee ultimately needs to approve international travel applications for, under our. Uh, field trip policy. Um, and so any members, um, who do not have that policy, I can forward you. I just happened to have it pulled out. If you would like me to forward you that particular part of our policy manual, which is quite lengthy. This policy is not and has been recently updated in the last few years. Um, so, um, Deputy Superintendent of the Office of Teaching and Learning, Leslie Ryan Miller, updated us on the potential. Um, and interest, and she has been in touch with, uh, I think it was around 30 different area, um, deputy superintendents. Who are also contemplating, other districts are also contemplating international travel in some capacity. Um, and they are, the district is looking into different, um, insurance. Um, for the purpose of international travel as well as health and safety protocol. So. More to come on that, but I did want the committee to be aware of the potential so that it wasn't a surprise. Um, if anyone has any questions, you can let me know, um, or, um, and I will find out anything we need to know from. From Leslie. Um, I hope that covers everything. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Andy?
Uh, thanks. So Belle had to leave unexpectedly, so she asked me to report on the first meeting of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Justice Subcommittee, which occurred on Monday, the sixth. So Janaya reported on her work this year, which has been extremely wide-ranging. Uh, and then there was some discussion about, uh, the role of the subcommittee, um, which will be partly about. Communication, uh, both listening to students and educators, um, and also communicating out about work that's being done and about data stories that should be guiding the work. Um, we discussed how best to incorporate, uh, student voices into the committee. Uh, that will get worked out, uh, with the students who, um, are planning to participate. Uh, next meeting tentatively scheduled for August 1st, uh, we'll be working on the equity policy and hearing from students then if we can.
Thank you. Ellen?
So quickly, today was the last Edco meeting. We finished everything and closed up shop today. Uh, with the blessing of the staff at the Department of Education. Of early, of elementary and secondary education and the commissioner should be writing a letter to us. Giving us, um, dispensation to disband. We couldn't disband, uh, Edco without him. It was a very sad meeting, actually. So just wanted to let everybody know, we probably, we will be getting a reimbursement in July. Uh, for overpayment. So just wanted to let everybody know, we probably, we will be getting a reimbursement in July for overpayments. All the districts will, as they're finishing up all the accounts, but more to come. Thank you.
All right. For policy, Mariah pretty much already covered it. Finance and policy have a joint meeting next week on the 15th from five to seven to review the fiscal D section. Anyone else? Suzanne?
Yeah, I just wanted to say quickly that I, I was honored able to attend the ACE graduation and SWS graduations. And both of them were just really very special. It's a very small program, so it's very personalized. And those two particular programs are just doing a great job, so a shout out to them.
And just to add to that, I think this is the 50th year of SWS.
It is, yeah.
We may want to have them come and just talk to the school committee and the, the, the residents about what SWS has been and what. You know, what, what it does and how it's been around. It's one of the first of its kind, I think, that started here in Brookline.
And one of the first to still be around. I think they have a reunion sometime in June for.
That's why I'm saying that. That's exactly, I think it's this coming weekend.
I can give us, yeah.
Helen, any update for capital?
Um, well, I did, I think we're going to be canceling the meeting on Tuesday. There's too much going on right now and we don't have enough things to, to work on that are ready. So I'll probably be scheduling a meeting in the next couple of weeks. It just was too soon between the meetings and we're going to be talking in executive session about some, some of the lease issues. Is there something else I'm missing? Right now my head's not working that well. If somebody else from Capital is, no, I, I think that's it. I mean, we're, oh, oh, very important, Monday night, seven o'clock, tune in. We have the presentation on the Pierce School and the building project there from the architects with the drawings and stuff. And from the, uh, it'll be a very, it'd be a great opportunity for the whole committee to, to catch up on the project and see where we've gone with it.
All right, Mariah?
I just wanted to say that tomorrow we have the first meeting of the building maintenance working group, just relating to capital issues. And there was something else I wanted to say.
And that's part of the reason that I'm postponing this meeting, because I want to make sure what happens there will be, then come to the capital subcommittee.
Can I ask who that group, who makes up that group?
Sure. It's me, Helen, Sam, Matt, Melissa, Cliff, Brown. George Cole, who's on the building commission. Carol Levin from advisory, there's 10 of us, and I think I just need eight or so, and I'm missing a couple. Oh, Charlie Simmons. That's almost everyone I'm missing someone, but it's a mix of school committee, staff from the town and the school side and advisory. And I don't think there's anyone from select, yeah, I know there's no one from select board on the committee.
Okay, thanks.
What's the name of that group again?
Building Maintenance Working Group.
Okay, thank you.
This is a committee that was, or a working group under the setup by Town School Partnership to look at. Both the sort of, what is the actual dollar amount of the deferred maintenance on both the town side and the school side? And what should we be doing to address the backlog? And how should we be thinking about things differently going forward so that we hopefully don't get into this bind going forward?
As an additional update, I'd just like to remind everyone that tomorrow, the Ridley School is convening a carnival from two to seven PM. So if you're available in the afternoon or evening, it would probably be very nice to drop by and check it out. I remember I used to go to that as a child when I was a student there.
And at one o'clock, Principal Buller has actually invited, I think, colleagues from across the district. They are doing a sensory sneak preview at one o'clock for students that may be overwhelmed by large crowds. So that's happening earlier for students that need it. So great opportunity for students to experience it.
All right. So that brings us to new business. Any new business? Jennifer?
I, I just wanted to, um, second, I think something that Helen brought up before and that you just made me think of David, which was. To consider bringing back the calendar that we had of events that we used to put on the agenda. Which would list things like the carnival or steps to success events. Or I just, I loved that calendar that we used to have with community, like school community events. And so I would just like to, to put that back on the list of things that we might be able to consider doing again.
And it's up to us to get that information to Robin. I think that's the other piece, but it used to be at the bottom of the, the docket every, every time.
And we would put it up on the display. I look forward to when we're in person again, and we used to put it up and it would be on the screen for, you know, when we were on part of the. Went so big would have it up and community members could see it and access it. And so we'd encourage people, you know, it was, it was like, almost like in, in a way, an advertisement. It would promote community awareness of events, school events. I liked it and it helped me and I would always update my calendar to make sure that I was aware and I was trying to attend as many community events as possible. So. That's it. That was my business.
I agree. I'd like to see that too. All right. So that brings us to proposed executive session. I move that we meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. For the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the BEU Unit A grievances. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares. Purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. My Monity School to Clark Road, Brookline, Massachusetts. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the May 12th, 2022 and May 15th, 2022 meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Helen. Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Stephen? Andy?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, we will not be returning.
Hey, what about me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mariah.
Yes.
All right. And we will not be returning to executive, to open session. So good night for most of the public, well, for all of the public and for those of us who still continue, we have that other link.